Welcome everyone to tonight's school committee meeting. This is one of my favorite meetings, we've got a lot of guests, so we'll have a good time. But before we get started, Alex, do you mind leaving us on the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a consent agenda, minutes from May 22nd, 2014, and oath to bills and payroll.
Make the motion to include the consent agendas, right?
Second. Your motion is second, is there any discussion?
Yes, on the minutes, I am not included in the motion on the school committee contract with the ELA, line 68, Daryl Baker, Paula Bella, Chuck DeCout, Mike Fontenella, Keith Burton, I did vote aye.
Alright.
I have to add that, and then additionally, up on the first page, there are line 28, I have made a motion to nominate Daryl Baker as chair, oh sorry, as a vice chair, and that's not included in the minutes. I forget who seconded the motion.
I don't think there was a second to the motion.
There was, because we voted on it.
Oh, it was Chuck then?
That's right.
It was Chuck.
Right.
Alright, so amended?
So if we could add that to, that'd be great.
Yep. Any further discussion? Here we now call for a vote, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, introduction of the new student representative of the school committee?
We're actually still waiting for Bobby to arrive.
Okay, so we'll move on to that. Do we want to get interested citizens, or do we want to take care of our guests?
I think we should take care of our guests.
Let's take care of the guests.
Having said that, moving right along the agenda this evening, I can see. I'd like to welcome our guests this evening, we have Russell Street students with us and staff. As you know, this is our end of the year SIP update, our Student Improvement Plan update. If you recall, we finalized our new strategic plan at the end of February, so we really haven't had a lot of time to start actualizing it, but when we created SIPs last June, we already had a skeletal umbrella that we were using, so our SIP plans are all aligned with our district's strategic plan. So, I'm not going to talk a little more about the mechanics of this, at this time, I'd like to ask Principal Vazilo to introduce the staff and students.
Good evening, thanks for having us. As Mr. Fontenella indicated, this is one of our favorite nights of the year to update the school committee and the community on the things that have been going on in the school. Things are a little bit different this year, in your packet you have our updated sheets, and so I'm not going to speak to that. We're trying to stay on schedule today, and I want to make sure I yield all of our time to the teachers and students who have been here, so I know everyone's had a chance to read that, I'm happy to answer any questions that folks have before I turn it over. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Yes, in terms of the level two designation from the ESE, how does some of the information in the SIP relate to that in our efforts to improve that category?
Yeah, absolutely, I think, as I've spoken to in previous meetings, we've taken a very serious run at data analysis this year, created what we're calling at-risk learner meetings, where monthly we meet with grade levels with our building-based data team, where we're looking at students who may need additional assistance, or students who may need advanced challenge, and we're trying to make sure that we're meeting every student's needs. So there's been lots going on this year, you know, to try to attack that. Some of the reason that we're a level two school is based on some of our special education students who have done fabulously, if you look at their scores compared to other scores in the state, but haven't quite gotten the numbers that we would need to, to be level one, very proud of their progress. If you look at the progress over five years, they've made great progress, I think the staff's working hard on that, and we'll continue to focus on improvement there as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Thanks, so not hearing other questions, probably one of the things we're most proud of at Russell Street School this year is a full implementation of Responsive Classroom, and I know the committee has heard us talk about this, it was a significant investment for the district when I got here, it was one of the things that teachers and parents shared, as a big concern, wanted to make sure we had a research-based character development program in the building. Almost all of our professional staff attended one full week of training over the summer last year, many of them are signing up for a full week of training this year in Responsive Classroom too, and we thought it would be nice to share with the committee a little bit, and the community, a little bit about what Responsive Classroom looks like. So, I'm thrilled tonight that we have Ms. Love and Ms. Schoeffel here, along with 12 of our third grade students, who are going to model for you a morning meeting, and this type of meeting takes place in every Russell Street classroom, every single morning, it's how we start our day, every student participates, there's nothing else that takes place during that time. So I'm going to turn it over to them, I'll bring the microphone over, I think they're planning to have the students introduce themselves to you, and we'll do that, and you'll get a chance to take a look at what classrooms look like first thing in the morning at Russell Street. And thank you very much to all the families who took time to come out today, we really appreciate it.
Alright, hi, I'm...
Yeah, you won't hear it.
Got it. I'm Jessica Schoeffel, I'm one of the third grade teachers at Russell Street.
My name's Heather Love, and I'm one of the third grade teachers at Russell Street.
Hello, I'm Cailum Brownson.
I'm Ryan Graff.
I'm Hannah Batigo, in Ms. Love's class.
I'm Maddie Sherr.
I'm Amelia Rogers.
I'm Nev Martin.
I'm Erin Claykendall.
I'm Alex Delorenzo.
I'm Kyle Weldon.
I'm Ava Piterino.
I'm Jenny Pullan.
I'm Hannah Alvarado.
Today we will be showing you a morning meeting. We do the morning meeting because it starts off the day well, and we get to know each other's names better.
The four parts of morning meeting are the greeting, morning message, sharing, and an activity or game.
Now we will do the morning greeting, we do it so we can start the day off well.
Morning Ryan.
Morning Kyle.
Morning Alex.
Good morning Alex.
Good morning Erin.
Good morning Hannah.
Good morning Anna.
Good morning Ava.
Good morning Hannah.
Good morning Kyle.
Good morning Hannah.
The next part is the morning message, we do the morning message each day for us to know the schedule well, and it also helps, like, helps with academic and social skills. Dear third graders, today is Thursday, June 5th, 2014, thank you for volunteering to be our class representatives at the school committee meeting, we appreciate your effort, love Ms. Love plus Ms. Schoeffel. Please write something you've learned this year from morning meeting. New things about classmates, starts the day off good. I learned classmates' names, starts the day off in a peaceful way, fun way to start the day. Now we're going to share, and sharing's just connect with other people and find out their accomplishments. Maddie?
I want to share that in the summer, I will be attending a surfing camp in New Hampshire.
This sign is the "Me Too" sign, and it helps, it tells people that you are doing the same thing or something alike.
I'm ready for questions or comments. Erin? It really is. Kyle?
Where are you going?
I'm going to New Hampshire. Thank you, that was two.
Nev?
I'd like to share that on Sunday, my great-grandfather turned 99, I'm ready for questions and comments.
Amelia?
Wow, that's really cool.
Erin?
How did you celebrate?
He lives in Ecuador, so we don't get to see him that much, but we did FaceTime him. Thank you, that was two. The activity we will be doing is a game called Aunt Minerva, we try to guess the categories based on Aunt Minerva's example, listen carefully and you may be able to guess.
I'll start. Aunt Minerva likes soup, but she doesn't like ice cream. Aunt Minerva likes summer, but she doesn't like winter. Aunt Minerva likes hot chocolate, but she doesn't like popsicles.
Ava?
Yeah, Aunt Minerva likes hot things, but she doesn't like cold things.
Aunt Minerva likes towers, but she doesn't like small buildings. Aunt Minerva likes bears, but she doesn't like mice. Aunt Minerva likes skyscrapers, but she doesn't like cars.
She likes high things, but she doesn't like low things?
Yes. Thank you.
Do you have any question?
They're left speechless. Thank you so much for sharing your classroom meeting with us. That was great.
Very wonderful, thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Ms. Love and Ms. Schoeffel, did you want to share anything, just about the program in general, about how you feel like it's impacted your classroom?
I participated in the week-long training over the summer, and I feel it's had a fantastic impact on my teaching this year, I've really enjoyed it, and it's helped our classroom community to come together, and a key piece of the Responsive Classroom is by creating a positive social environment, the academic learning also increases, and I will be taking the Responsive Classroom 2 this summer as well.
Yeah, I mean, I echo what Heather said, we've had a lot of positive changes in our school this year, I feel, as a result of Responsive Classroom and the morning meeting, so it's been great, and I'm looking forward to learning more this summer.
And I also wanted to say thank you to all of the Russell Street representatives who came this evening, and it takes courage to stand up in front of a group and a live TV audience, and they were all, they all volunteered to participate, so let's give them one more big round of applause.
Thank you guys, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Next up, we have Shaker Lane, and Principal Ferry will, I believe, carry on a one-act show this evening.
Yeah, but I've got some help on video.
So I've heard, yes.
So, everybody has the school improvement plan update in front of you, I know it was only March when we were here, by the way, boys and girls, it was great to see you all again, great job. You have the update, and it was just March when we were here, so there weren't that many changes that are there. One of the highlights I'd like to just point out is the ELA study group, we have reviewed a couple of programs along with the Russell Street School, and since I wrote this, we have decided on a program to pilot next year, and so we will be beginning that in September for English Language Arts. I have to say, teachers are really very, very excited, the participation, the number of people who want to participate in the pilot is a little overwhelming, and I'm not sure we're going to be able to accommodate everybody who wants to participate, but we spent a considerable amount of time the last two weeks examining a couple of different programs, and we've chosen one to go ahead on, and that's really an exciting place for us to be. There were a few other updates that were in there, mostly to do with professional development and what we've continued on, the year-year technology, we also finished our AASTN training, our, excuse me, our ALIS training. But, one of the things that I wanted to talk about this evening is a grant that we were able to participate in the last two years, that Dr. Daniel McRae Rogers brought to Shaker Lane, and we had a couple of our kindergarten classes and a couple of our second grade classes participate in that grant, and the grant came from the Conca Consortium. The Conca Consortium is a nonprofit agency that's committed to, it focuses on STEM, science, technology, math, and engineering, and their work is to bring more STEM activities and to an emphasis on math and engineering and science and technology in the elementary grades. So, the hypothesis of the project that we participated in was that representation, data collection, student reflection, when integrated into creative exploration, can make learning about temperature and heat accessible to early learners. Now, one of the things you have to understand is, while we experience temperature and heat and cold every day, it's an abstract concept to young elementary students, so what we were trying to do is bring a visual reality to that. So using sensors and models and drawings, and I brought some sensors for you guys to play with this evening, and other representations, it would be possible for children to explore their world, investigating how temperature changes in different objects in the playground, at home, and in the school environment as well. So, I brought a few sensors, and Steve can pass these around to everybody, and all you have to do is pull the lever back, and you can take each other's temperature, you can take the temperature cable, your computer, your iPass, or whatever. But, I also have a short video to show you, and the question on this, before the video was taken, students were each given a sensor to bring home with them, and they were also given a journal to record your observations with during the course, this is one of the sensors right here, they were also given a journal to record their observations with, and the video clip you're going to see is from Amy McGrath's second grade classroom, and it's one student explaining what his experience was like, so why don't you share that with us here. That's the wrong one. Save that for the end. That's the clincher.
Alright, go to Tyler. Tyler?
I wanted to find out which type of wood, I mean oak wood and like, or it was like a lot of wood, I'm like, straight through wood.
Did you think the two types of wood would be different?
Yes.
What did you think?
So, the trio of wood, I thought it would be like 49.6, it was like 50.
So you weren't too much too far off?
And the actual wood was 63.2, I thought it was 75.2.
What do you mean by the actual wood?
Like, it's kind of like published wood, like, they like sawed it, made that...
Like furnished?
Yeah.
Huh, I wonder why it was warmer?
I wonder.
Why do you think it was warmer?
And just because it's not outside or...
Did the other piece come directly from outside?
Yeah, like, it was, because it's like at the end of winter, so...
Yeah.
Yes, we're on the...
Gotcha. What did you want to, you wanted to give it to Heather? Yeah, alright, Catherine?
So, that was Tyler talking about what his experience was like over the weekend, using one of the sensors, and you can see by the questions that Ms. McGrath was asking, that what we're really trying to do is increase student inquiry and get a good handle on what your observations were. It's been a great project, we've been doing it for two years now, we had two kindergarten classes participate, I believe, or was it this one?
Two kindergarten transitional and four secondary.
And four secondary classrooms. It's been, Littleton did this along with the Cambridge Public Schools. Questions on, so far?
Do we get the key? We'll save it to the end.
Do you get to keep those? No, you do not.
For a nominal $100 fee.
Yeah, nominal, they do have to be, they do have to be returned at the end.
No parting gifts.
No, no parting gifts, no parting gifts at all. So, the second clip that I want to show you comes directly from Shaky Films, we now have our own production company, and it just kind of gives you an overall, an overall look at what we do at Shaker Lane every day, and it's a very short clip, meant to highlight a little bit about what we do with 20th century skills, and how that's incorporated into the students' everyday life at Shaker Lane. Ready?
Great.
It's going to be our new promo video on our website, starting next week, we're going to take off one of our other ones and put that one on instead. But, any questions about the school improvement plan, the update, anything you saw this evening?
So now, tools such as this, that you're letting the children use, and I guess putting a little bit more concrete to that abstract than you were saying before, what sort of differences have you noticed, because, I mean, you've been in education with the early children for a long, long time now.
I thought you were going to say since the beginning.
No, tonight, tonight's a kind of friendly night. What sort of, I guess, objective differences have you noticed?
I, one of the things in talking with, you know, both of the Amys in kindergarten and in second grade, and Marty Packer, and Amy McGrath, and Evelyn in transitional, is students are more curious about what they're seeing in their environment from the whole project, and they're better able, it's how to carry over, not only into certainly what they've learned in terms of topics in the year-year of science, but also in their writing skills as well. So what we've seen is students just not taking things for granted and being able to talk about them, explore a little bit more, have a better sense as to that things, while they might be right in the environment, will all, for this unit, would all have a different temperature that's there. Please pass those back to me, because if I don't get them back...
I already gave them to you.
Yeah.
Just one more question, who's all in the conference?
It's actually, it's a nonprofit agency, it's not a institution in the sense of the way we have collaborated.
Before we go on to our next presentation, Chloe was kind enough to come out this evening to introduce our new student rep, so Chloe, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay.
Do you mind using the microphone?
Not at all. Oh boy, okay. I don't really know where you want me to stand.
That's fine.
So, the new student rep is Bobby Morris, he's a junior this year, he's very smart and really wanted to do this, and I think that's exciting, I know we do a good job.
Excellent, welcome Bobby.
We don't need a microphone, because we have those things dangling down, I'll catch our voice, do you have any kickoff comments as you get underway?
Um, not exactly, Chloe said much of what I need to say about myself.
You're smart, okay.
It was better that Chloe said it, not you.
All we ask is that you discreetly don't be too much smarter than we are, we know you're smart, and just don't be too much smarter than we are, okay?
I'll do my best, thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you. Bye Chloe.
See you Chloe. Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Oh.
And Principal Harrington will again do a solo presentation this evening.
Yes, thank you. Finally mixing up the order.
We are.
Okay.
Uploading.
Thank you very much. Happy to be here tonight and give you an end of the year update for LHS. A lot of it, as you saw in the packet, is similar to what you saw back in March in terms of the update because it wasn't that long ago. But just to give some highlights in a little by category, we continue to work on our alignment with the Common Core curriculum and prepare for the new park assessments. There's lots of discussions now across the state, and our district too, about whether we're going to go in the elementary years and middle school years with them cast or a park. But we want to make sure that the high school gets ready as well and will prepare. We did our pilot testing along with the other schools in, or preparations throughout April, and particularly in March, in May for us was when we administered the test. But we wrapped that up, and that went pretty well, I can report that. And we feel like our preparations are going according to schedule, according to plan. In regards to something we highlighted last March, we had a curriculum initiative related to our advisory program. We have to do this per NEASK. We have to adopt an advisory curriculum. We expect that we'll incorporate elements of an anti-bullion curriculum into that, and it will be part and parcel of how we do things at LHS each day. There's different models out there, and there's the daily model, and then there's a model where it happens in advisory, we meet once a month or once every two weeks. We're looking at different models, but that's progressing. We hope to have that accomplished through a special project. We have a couple of teachers who have shown some initiative, and I'll really do that this summer. So, we'd like to launch that as soon as possible to be, you know, in compliance with our NEASK recommendations. Also, I highlighted last March, and I'll just mention briefly again, we're really proud of the work the social studies history department has done with the research curriculum. That theme of creativity or inquiry goes right through, it's a thread that goes right through the school system and up to the time students like Chloe finish, like tomorrow when she graduates. She herself embarked on a research initiative with the local historical society, made a big presentation to the community. Some of you may have been present for that last year. She did it along with, I think, Book Anderson. Fantastic job of inquiry into local, local history. And our, and our history program in particular has been a really shining star with research skills and developing research skills. We'd like to, we know that's happening in science, we know it's happening in ELA, but we want to start to have open discussions about that and see how we're documenting that. It's very important that we have, as an outcome for students, as they prepare for post-secondary education, whether they go on to college or whatever, that they have a baseline for how to inquire, how to research, how to write a research paper, and how to properly cite. So, that's something we want to make sure we're doing and we have it well documented. Also, last March, and again, I'll just make brief mention of, we have a partnership ongoing with code.org. We have a teacher named Kelly Ogden. She presented to you just recently. She's our math department coordinator. She's going to lead this initiative. She has a minor in computer science and is particularly interested in delving deeper into computer science. And she's going to launch our Exploring Computer Science course next September. Our plan down the road is for Kelly Ogden then to transition to the AP Computer Science course the following, following year or the, perhaps, it may be a, maybe a skippy year, might be two years out. But we hope in the next year or two from September, we'll be offering AP Computer Science at LHS. When we do that, we'll be coming back to you and to the superintendent to talk about an additional point-two FTE to cover Kelly in order so she can do that, and someone can then take on her Exploring Computer Science course. So that's the update with that. In regards to instruction, it's a little jargony because that's the, the language you find there is right from NEASK. That was in the report, the recommendations. We updated our instruction section of the school improvement plan based on the following NEASK recommendations, and it, and I'll just quickly highlight one. If you could just scroll down a little bit. Steve. Review instructional practices to ensure consistency with the school's core values and 21st century learning expectations. Well, Rich just mentioned a number of them. Communication, collaboration, creativity, of course, critical thinking at the high school level, where we really get students to optimize their thinking skills. That's something we want to make sure is embedded in our curriculum, and we see it displayed in daily instruction. So we're going to have lots of conversations about this at our faculty meetings and, as well as our department meetings about how we, how we document these, that particular thing, the accomplishment of our 21st century learning expectations. Let me just give you a brief example. One of the expectations that we have is to develop and apply critical thinking skills and problem-solving skills. Another one is to use technology skills as students research and communicate their learning. We want to make sure that that's happening. Are we doing what we say we do? That's what we have to be able to, to report out, not only to you as a school committee, but and to NEASK, but also to our students and to our parents and the community, that our students have been assessed on these particular skills. And we will be, we've developed rubrics or assessments for, for example, using technologies, technology skills as students research and communicate their learning. As we, what we need to do is start to implement those rubrics on a daily basis or regular basis, and making sure that we're documenting that that's happening. So, that's something we'll be able to, we're, we expect, we'll be developing grading reports for so that we can report out at the individual level to students and to parents. But then we also will collect aggregate data on this. How are we doing at different performance levels with students? It's going to take some time, but NEASK is a 10-year process, and so as we look to accomplish this, we'll be, we'll be monitoring our progress at different intervals. Another major piece for us, aside from having lots of emphasis on instructional strategies, we'll be talking about technology at the high school next year and really getting engaged with that. One of the things that NEASK recommended was to review instructional technology available for each classroom and each teacher. And we'll do inventory. We'll also do an assessment of what, where the skill levels are for each teacher. What would they like to see, where would they like to see professional development? I was excited to talk to three teachers in the past week who are interested in flipping the classroom. I know that's happening at other buildings. I think it's at the eighth grade for sure at the middle school. So, we'll probably be consulting with the middle school about this, as well as with other experts in the field of this. We have, there's one actually at a local private school who I've met who could help us out with flipping the classroom. And with that is essentially, you know, the presentations, the lectures perhaps would be in video format, and students could watch that, the lectures and present, formal presentations at home. And then when they arrive in the classroom, they can engage in more collaborative projects, talking to each other, discussion-based, doing some writing, getting personalized attention of the teacher, where the teacher doesn't just present to, say, 20 people, but is able to circulate and work with individual students as they, as they apply what they watched or read the evening before. So, what we'll probably like to do is come back to you and let you know how we're doing with that, and make a presentation about how flipping the classroom is happening at the high school. That'd be a nice thing to be able to report out to you this time next year. The other thing that we're really actively working on or expect to is formative assessment. This is, of course, a best practice, and no surprise that NEASK would recommend it, but we want to increase the use of formative assessment, monitoring students' progress as they're going along, and giving the feedback in a timely manner so they can make adjustments along the way, and not just wait till the summative assessments. We might remember some of us from our college days when we were just given, say, two major assessments, one at the mid-year and one at the end. That's certainly not a best practice in, for any of us to learn, is to be, you know, given feedback on such an infrequent level or time frame. So what we want to make sure we're doing is that all of our teachers have adopted formative assessments. We're going to see more of that anyway through the District Determined Measures Initiative. The other thing that you've already heard a little bit about is to implement school-wide rubrics to improve assessment and data to inform instruction. I wanted to highlight this instruction piece and elaborate a little bit for you because this is going to be a central priority for us next year, is to really look at, how are we teaching? How are students learning? What's effective? What are the best practices out there as a school? Our conversations in the last few years, now entering into, I mean, six years as principal next year, have really focused around a lot of compliance initiatives, particularly with NEASK and with some of the DES-y things. We want to really get at the heart of what we're doing and start to talk about instruction and how our students are benefiting from what we do each day. And how, and how can we get better? What can we do differently? And that, that's at the core. We really want to touch upon the core of what we do each day with instruction. Moving along to assessment, I'll just briefly tell you that I've already sort of said it, that we implemented the park pilot last month, and we think it went well. Another thing related to assessment is that we're going to continue to develop and implement our district determined measures. I think it was Dr. Jamian who made a presentation about that just recently for you. That will become a hot topic, no doubt, throughout Littleton and across the state next year. Or is a hot topic across the state. We also expect in our assessment section that we're going to have to review and prepare for an update of our SAT preparations. What are we, what are we doing within our curriculum to prepare for the changes and educate parents, educate students about this? The SAT, you may have heard, is going through a redesign. It's going to become operational in the spring of 2016. They're going back to the older version of the scale score from 2,400 to 1,600. They'll, the essay section will be optional. There are a number of other changes, lots and lots of emphasis on evidence-based writing. We feel we'll be well positioned for that based, based on how much we do of that now, but also based on the Common Core. There are a lot of, SAT is really responding, the SAT test is really responding to the push from the Common Core to redesign their tests, and they've done, and they've done that. In regards to professional development, I'm just moving right along with our categories. We adopted the new site-based PD model, and that was talked about, Dr. Branko brought that to Littleton based on his research, and that really was well received by the faculty. We continued our professional development of lots of areas that you already know about, educator evaluation, Common Core, and of course, our safety protocol, ALICE. And that was all listed out there for you, so you could, you could see that what we did this year. It was a busy year at LHS, like all the schools, sometimes a little too busy. The bell schedule study group, I mentioned before, it's been delayed, and it's unfortunate that that had to, had to happen. It got bumped by other priorities, but we're expecting to, I'm going to particularly launch into that myself, along with our assistant principal, Mrs. Temple, this summer by visiting nearby schools. We tried to do this during the school year, it just, it just couldn't happen, there was just too many other things getting in the way. So we're going to get a head start on this. Talked to some of the administrators at the other schools have gone through recent bell schedule changes. We want our students to have the best bell schedule possible to optimize learning during the hours that we have defined by the contract, but we want to make sure that we're giving flexibility with it in the day. And also, this provides us a real opportunity to innovate. Superintendent, in particular, when he arrived, really stressed this, this initiative that we should really be looking at our bell schedule and how we use instructional time during the day in the most efficient and effective way for students. So it ties in nicely with our instructional strategy priority and shift there. In regards to community and communication, that category, I've talked a little bit about this before, and we talked specifically, or proposed to the school committee, the possibility of identifying local internships in the area. We did some reflection as a school council on this and thought about, and discussed this a bit, but what we really need to do is actually take a step back and really look at, what do we want out of, out of an internship? How many students would, would use it? What do we want out of students going off to the work site? We have lots of interest each year from, from strong interest, from a select group of seniors. It's usually a solid group of five who would love to go out and go and work somewhere and intern and apply and learn, be mentored on a, on a job site. There's some liability issues there for us, there's supervision issues, and there's lots of requirements related to this. So as we, before we got, we were getting a little ahead of ourselves, thinking, okay, let's start, because we were so excited about partnering with local businesses and just different companies, and excited about what the potential this meant for our students. But we said, wait a minute, let's find out what we want this program to look like at LHS. Let's have it well-prepared. Let's make sure that it's going, you know, students would benefit from it and really thrive. So, that's something we're going to be exploring this upcoming year, and hopefully coming to you with some type of formal presentation around what we came up with as far as internship programs. In regards to the Aspen portal, you've already received enough updates, I think, about that in March. But we do expect, at the end of the month, to, to survey parents and faculty about how it went this past year. This is our parent, online portal for parents, and make adjustments based on that if we can. I want to thank once again, Deidre Jones and a number of other people on our council who really delved into our, the revision of our Community Service Handbook, cleaned up the language, and that's now on our website. Deidre continues to do, you know, the only work with that, and she's planning on helping us, she's working closely with Mike McGeckern, our Director or Coordinator of Technology, to develop a way for it to integrate with Aspen, our online portal, so parents can track the hours and have a more user-friendly way of keeping up to date on how students are doing. So that's that. In regards to technology, it's in our, it's in the update here. We continue to offer site-based technology trainings, but we really want to get a better sense of how we can tailor that to the needs of the, of the faculty. So I tend to meet this summer with the Coordinator of Technology and start to brainstorm the necessary or training, different trainings that we'd like to see. And I just also want to mention two other, aside, oh, one last thing related to technology. We want to develop a site-based technology plan. This is something that really needs to happen. I get, I always get a little envious of our other schools when I see the exciting things that they're doing with technology. What they've really done is they've brought it together. They've, we have lots of amazing things happening with technology at the high school. We haven't really brought it all together for you to show you how we're doing it on a daily basis, and I think that's something that we really should, should aim to do next year, because there's a lot of great things happening. But we continue to have areas of growth there, and we're, we're expecting that that will happen, no doubt, in the next year. And just a couple of things that aren't in the, in the update, but I just want to make a mention of that are exciting initiatives for us, and also at some of the other schools. Dave Riley, our Energy Czar and Conservation Specialist, has, is, and along with Trish Bonacor from the middle school, and I might miss someone, Mark from the middle school, but there are lots of people there who are sponsoring, I think it might be Greg Gillette.
Yes.
Yeah, the blue, sorry, the Green Ribbon Schools Initiative. To really want to jump on board with this, it's going to be, I think, a district goal to, to have green ribbon schools. And what that, the high school, what that will look like is really getting lots of students excited about healthy lifestyles, sustainability, energy conservation. And there'll be more news about this coming forward in the fall, but I just wanted to make mention of that. We're going to pursue green ribbon school status. And then, and lastly, I just wanted to give you a little preview of, of something that I proposed to the superintendent, and that is an adjustment in our physical education requirements. You may recall from past presentations or just discussions that we need to be compliant with our coordinated program review, which was, happened in March, and Dr. Detweiler can remind us all about that, has vivid memories of that, no doubt. But it was identified there, we knew this was going to happen, that we had, we were out of compliance with our physical education requirement mandate from the state. So we're going to increase our credit, I will make a, I'll make a formal proposal first to the superintendent, then to you, to look at that in the fall, to increase our credit requirement, so that we can gradually and fiscally responsibly adjust our credit requirement in a way that we can manage. One of the things, though, along with that request, it's a policy change, so it needs to be reviewed by, you know, it's graduation requirements, but the other issue, or it's not so much an issue, or the other proposal, and this is more of a procedural thing that I will ask the superintendent's approval of, is an alternative credit option for Littleton High School physical education courses. I've reviewed it, again, just, just as recently as yesterday with the physical education teachers, Mrs. Perry and Mr. Lynn, and they're on board with this option. They'd like to give, ready to give it a go. What it allows students to do, and it's based on, well, before I say what it allows them to do, it's based on demand and lots of advocacy from students as well as parents, and we talked a lot about this at school council this year. What is based, what allows students to do is to take, if they're involved in, say, basketball or a football team, is to take, that's an intense workout during their day, but it allows them to substitute that upon lots of qualifications that are clearly spelled out in writing. It allows them to apply that experience. but it allows them to substitute that upon lots of qualifications that are clearly spelled out in writing. It allows them to apply that experience for, they are able to apply it for credit, they receive credit for it, for PE credit. And we think that opens up lots of possibilities for our students, be it flexibility within the day to take the different courses, as well as just give them something different from the traditional PE class. Some students would prefer to be able to substitute something that they're actively involved in and passionate about. So that, those are some highlights of our end of the year, with our end of the year report. I'd be happy to entertain questions. I imagine a lot of them may be about the physical education alternative credit option, and I have a few notes that I can reference if you have specific questions about that.
Just to be clear, our intent is, excuse me, not to reduce physical education staff. Our intent is to continue to offer the core, which was typical across our nation, and that's five credits, three to five credits of mandatory phys ed during one's high school career. The mandate in Massachusetts that has been all over the board for many, many years, I believe, is 7.5, or is actually even higher, depending on how you want to interpret it.
Yes, it alters your credit system.
What's, what's happened as a result of this is schools are looking at alternative ways to meet those credit requirements after that base requirement is made. So we're exploring that area. We have had mixed information given to us, and I'm still sifting through, so to speak, just to make sure that we have all of our Ts crossed and our Is dotted. It will be an exciting venture when we have it all sorted through.
Questions, Daryl?
Yeah, so I'm not necessarily looking for the answers tonight. It's, you know, I'm not opposed to what you're proposing about the alternate piece there, but from a policy perspective and some of the things I've been reading, my readings and understandings, I think I'm going to have a lot more questions on, you know, there's the requirements that you can't charge for credit-based courses. We charge a sports fee. So there's a lot of other implications that I think from a policy perspective, I want to make sure that I'm comfortable with here, that, you know, it's not that I'm opposed to the plan here, but I want to make sure it's compliant with all the legal requirements there. Likewise, whether it's properly supervised by teaching staff versus coaching staff, there's some technicalities in there that I think, I want to make sure that I understand how we're addressing all of those. But I'm not looking for the answers tonight, but I think that's a preview of the types of questions that, as you develop the proposal.
Sure.
That I'll be looking for from, at least from the policy perspective, as we update the policy section to accommodate that.
Thank you for that, and I'll just say that one of the things we did incorporate was that consideration of, we made a mention of that in our proposal and discussed that, you know, that because it's optional, it's not a requirement. We said that, we made it stip, we stipulated in it that identify that it would be at, any activity, say if someone was involved in figure skating, that's at the expense of that family, if they want to substitute that experience, which is quite intensive and athletic, for PE credit. So we did stipulate that as one of the conditions, you know, as people signing off for it. And people would not be, if they, say they, you're on a basketball team and you want to substitute your season there, or use that at, apply that for 2.5 credits. We stipulated in it, since it is optional, that students and families would not be exempt from the athletic fee, but I know there's lots more conversation about this, but we did make mention of that.
I'll just hold it, do you actually have the proposal ready for us, rather than asking hypothetical questions?
Okay.
That would be better.
Sure.
What were some of the changes that were made recently in terms of the physical education requirements? Or where's the confusion there?
Well, excuse me, the confusion is the interpretation of the language. It's not black and white, it's gray, and as a result, we've had many schools throughout the Commonwealth and beyond offering one full course of phys ed for graduation. The interpretation of the Massachusetts statutes could be interpreted that school or student should have the choice to take some type of physical activity-related class or health class during their four years of schooling. So that's where the confusion is. It's never been rewritten, and as a result, people have interpreted it their own way.
The law is about as old as I am.
Probably older.
Possibly older, yes. One of the things that is allowed under the law and through state regulations is for a school district to come forward and go to DESE and say, hey, can you waive this requirement? This is one way we could, from a legal perspective, go over any barriers in front of that alternative physical education requirement. Not sure about the cost issue that Daryl brought up, which I think is a valid point, but I know that other school districts have been able to issue it. I know Franklin Public Schools have dealt with the issue, and that Newton Public Schools have done the same thing. I do think it's a great idea, and I thought it was a great idea before the CPR showed that we needed more PE.
Right.
So I think it sort of works well because it will help offset some of that fiscal burden, I think.
Actually, credits.
That that statement from the coordinated programmer view gives us, where we would have to other increase. The class sizes of the PE courses are more likely increased the offerings because students will then need to be taking courses all the time.
Right.
Or much more frequently. So I think the alternative PE program not only supports our athletes, but makes it easier for us to support our other needs as well from a budgetary perspective.
Last question.
Yeah.
You said videos and like, who's going to be making the videos?
Well, it could be a combination. It could be an educational video provided by, you know, publisher or something that an instructor found, but it also could be the teacher, him or herself, you know, could videotape their lesson and have the students lecture, that would be primarily at the board, and then a student could watch that at home. It's done in different ways.
Surely, the video would be one media.
Oh, yeah.
Any.
Oh, yeah. There'd be lots of different media.
That'll take the place of homework.
It would be a homework assignment, and, yeah, that's true.
Good chance.
Okay? You good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Branko.
We're getting there, right? I'm not going to go all the way through the packet that I gave you. What I want to do is go through the italicized information in the middle school update, because that's the stuff that's most recent from March, and I literally added a few things by hand in the past couple of days that have happened in the past week that didn't get in, so I'll kind of cover those. Also, behind that, in your packet, you should have some documents related to our science curriculum review, as well as the updates to the handbook. So I don't know if you want us to just knock all that out at the same time, or if you want to come back to the handbook.
But let's just go through your presentation first of all.
And then hit that.
And do the handbook.
Okay. Absolutely. The biggest initiative, I think, and undertaking that we've been involved in at the middle school, and there are a lot of them going on, but I think the most daunting one right now is our science curriculum review process that Dr. Finity has been leading with the six, eight science department. They have done a ton of work. I have submitted this curriculum review process overview document the first time through when we wanted to do this. I gave it to you again, just as a reference point tonight, and if you take a look at the document I've given you, on April 3rd through the 5th, we were very, very fortunate to have the National Science, the National Science Teachers Association Conference in Boston. Does not happen all the time, and it's unbelievable that the stars aligned with the national conference happening here in the year that we're doing a curriculum review. I mean, you couldn't really have asked for that any better. So we sent all three science teachers to that conference, as well as Mr. Shoemaker, our technology teacher, and they came back with a massive amount of information, curriculum materials. They went to a whole bunch of instructional seminars and did a lot of dip-sticking on best practices, and so they're going to, they've spent some time already disseminating that information, and they'd like to spend the summer and the fall really absorbing all of that, so that we can make sure we take a lot of information that's coming right out of that national level and implement it into our new curriculum as we move forward, piloting some programs. I also attached a couple of the documents. One of them is the science curriculum review proposal materials. If you remember, you guys were so kind as to budget a certain amount of money every year for the next three years to support this initiative, so we obviously felt like we had to spend that accordingly and to let you know how we spent that. So this proposal for probe wear order was not done in haste, that we spent a lot of time looking at some brand, brand-new science materials, and so what I have in front of you is the order that's out. We've already put the order through, but this is the proposal that we put together for probe wear materials that will really, really help us. What we're doing is a two-phase process here, where we did a whole look at our current curriculum and our inventory this school year, and next year, we'd like to spend time visiting the other schools and talking about programs to pilot, but we didn't feel it was responsible to then sit there and not do anything new in year two, so the probe wear is going to allow us to do the new work. So we're going to have some brand-new technology that we can implement. Mr. McGeekren and I have talked about within this year's budget, talking about three brand-new projectors. The middle school is very fortunate and has been to have the technology we have, but believe it or not, those projectors are already out of date, and I'm not sure where we are year eight with the building, is that right? Eight or nine, but it's, they're already out of date as far as HDMI and some digital components go. So we want to make sure that in the science classrooms, if we're going to spend all this money on the probe wear, that we're also going to have the correct digital projectors mounted up top. So we're going to do that work over the summer to get these three science classes really up and ready. And the probe wear is going to just change the world in the science class, all hands-on, all digital cameras. Kids can be sitting at their lab tables and projecting right to the front of the class and sharing together. It's going to be amazing to watch, and I saw the demo at firsthand, it was just, it was unbelievable. So I submitted that for you guys to see, and the other document in here that we will work with Dr. Jamian on is a proposal to do summer work, and we have talked about this a lot this year. I know it's a supported initiative in the district. There are only so many hours in the day that we can do this work deeply and thoughtfully during the school year, and this team is really dedicated to doing a lot of work in the summer, so we've put together a bulleted item analysis of the work that they've proposed to do, and we'll kind of forge ahead with that work. We've already researched and proposed in what are new materials, including the probe wear, also Lego Mindstorm, which Mr. Shoemaker is going to use as an offshoot from his curriculum and try to get into the engineering realm next year with the Lego Mindstorm material. So he also would like some time in the summer to work on that, so that he can hit the ground running in September, and that was his big takeaway from the conference. At the bottom of page one, we also talked about an initiative where we were trying to select and implement grade level normed assessments in ELA, so we could get a better handle on the reading level of our students at the middle school. We did do a pilot of FAST, which you've already heard about this year, and then most recently, we've reviewed NWEA at the district level, along with our curriculum coordinators, and I believe we're talking about making plans to implement that in the 14, 15 school year. And the middle school is very excited for the reality of having some, some real-time data that we can use to assess kids and figure out where they are on a consistent basis across all students in all grade levels of the middle school. In the category of working towards best practices and implementing strategies to meet the needs of struggling learners, we've continued to work on our academic support model every year. One of the changes that we made, if you remember, that reported last year, was that in our first year of implementation, that program didn't start until the, after the first trimester. This year, we adjusted that to happen at the midterm break. Now we're adjusting it for year three, so that we're doing an analysis of where the students are right now at the end of this school year, and we're going to proactively place kids in intervention in September. So what we're saying to kids and families is, listen, we've put these training wheels on and supports in place to really make sure we can support you. It feels foolish to then throw you back onto two wheels in September and say, let's see if you fall over again. Instead, we're going to keep at least one training wheel on and let them start and be successful right out of the gate, and then we'll do some analysis along the way. So I feel like every year, we tweak that program a little bit to support our regulated students and make sure that they're, those kids who are the tweeners that I'm always concerned about, we make sure we're doing right by those kids. We also have updated our SST process this year. Ms. Tracy Turner is a fantastic special ed teacher in our building. She's pursuing her doctorate currently as well at Northeastern, will be defending very soon, and she's been doing a lot of work in this area with me. So one of the tasks she took on this year, along with a lot of other work, was she worked to update our SST process and to do it much more efficiently. So we're using Google Docs now, and we're paperless in our SST process, and everything is done virtually and asynchronously, and it's made us much more efficient. It's made us hold each other accountable for timelines and getting to kids' needs a little quicker as far as assessing them. So that's been a nice change. In the area of implementing strategies, our programs related to meeting the needs of advanced learners, we continue to be proud of our VHS program. Our engineering club is in year two. As a student-run club from high school students, we are going to have ongoing discussions about improving that program in year three. We, for the first time, had the middle school spelling bee this year, which I think is an awesome opportunity, and it was directly linked to the Scripps National Spelling Bee, so we're very proud of that move. Took two years, actually, to get us on the list for Scripps. I'm not sure why it takes that long, but it took us some time to get that done, so that gave a whole another subset of kids a nice element there. You guys know that we were part of the code.org movement. One of the other things we're looking at is we are currently reviewing Destination Imagination as a potential offering for next year. It's a great program that I've had in other districts and have been part of, and I think was part of Littleton's history many, many moons ago, and I think it's really ripe for the taking as far as middle school goes for experiential learning and for giving kids and empowering them to take advantage of their own learning opportunities. It is extremely community-involved and parent-involved. This actually helps us in a couple areas, because one of the other big barriers to success in any middle school that I've ever worked in is how to best involve parents, because kids are pushing kids away, and we don't have that same parent helper kind of mode that elementary schools sometimes have, so we get a bad rap unintentionally for pushing parents out the door sometimes. So I think this is a program that we really are going to need parent involvement and support from. So I'm going to take a good, hard look at that over the summer, and I'm going to make an appointment with one of their local reps and try to bring that in for September. Also, the National Junior Honor Society is talking about partnerships within our school district and outside of our school district as a way to let those advanced learners really be part of the community and give back, so we'd like to talk to Principal Buzidlow at Farady about having our National Junior Honor Society kids maybe doing like a peers, mentoring peers kind of thing, and moving down and working with struggling students at the younger levels, and let those kids really come down. And then also, I have some friends, obviously, in other schools who are leaders, and we'd like to talk about our National Junior Honor Societies at the local middle school levels getting together for some community experiences to kind of bring think tanks together of some young up-and-coming middle school leaders, so we think that'll be a powerful movement. Let me flip for you, because I think that's everything on that page. Under communication, we continue to do a lot of good work around this. Very proud of the fact that, along with the entire district, the middle school was part of the school-wide implementation of Aspen and our family portal. This is an anecdotal data collection, but I'll do a real one at the end of the year if I have a minute to take a breath. Right now, we're around 55 to 60% of the faculty at the middle school using the parent portal in real time, and if you remember, that was a pretty heavy conversation coming in with Aspen and the portal, and we talked about, you know, minimally, that everybody had to use it for midterms and for report cards, but it's really been kind of infectious, and as teachers have opened the portal, I've had teachers training other teachers, how do you do it? What do you make public? What do you make private? What has your success been around this? Has it really helped with parent communication? And I will tell you that everybody who's opened it up has had, a majority of the comments have been positive, and so that's kind of flowing out across the middle school faculty right now. So I anticipate that every year, that's going to be a much higher percentage of people using those portals in real time, and it's been really, and we get nice positive feedback from the parents. We have a lot of teachers suddenly using Twitter, which is fun as a PR tool. We also have some using it as a way of tweeting out the homework every single night, so again, it doesn't mean they're not using the website and they're not using other methods, but the more methods we can get out there, the better, I think, sometimes, because everybody has a preferred way to communicate. So what we're trying to do is just hit as many of those preferred ways as possible. Also, we have teachers piloting some text update programs. One is called Remind 101. Another one is called Sendhub.com. Both texting apps that are secure, that you can sign up for, you can do reverse texting. So we have teachers that are just texting out homework and texting out links, and we know that that's what the kids are looking for. So we have kids following those texting apps as opposed to the parents. So you've got a kid walking around at four o'clock, he gets a text from Ms. Morgan that says, don't forget to do page 45 in your history book, and he goes, oh, and he turns off Minecraft and he has to do his homework. So it's been a pretty, a pretty cool experience for a couple teachers who have piloted that. And again, it's just, you know, another tool in the toolbox to make sure that we let kids and parents know what's going on and what they're responsible for. Under the climate and culture category, we've talked a lot in this room this year about Alice. We completed our staff training at the middle school in March 26th and 27th. It was a fantastic training. I can't say enough about Detective Fernandez's support in this initiative. At the middle school level, I'd like to also acknowledge Greg Gillette, our PE teacher. He was the other teacher who got trained with me as an Alice trainer, and he's really taken this to heart and takes it seriously. So between Detective Fernandez and Mr. Gillette and I, and Mr. Steve Mark was there that day, I'm trying to think who else was in the room that day. I think Rich might have been with us, I'm not sure. It was a full room that day. So we did a lot of good work, and we agreed that we were going to put this, excuse me, the student trainings off until the fall, because it really didn't make any sense to us to talk about training kids, fifth graders in one building, when we knew they'd be coming up here in eight weeks and have to relearn everything at the middle school, or eighth graders and retrain them again at the high school. So we're going to do those trainings thoughtfully, put the work together over the summer, and then kind of roll that out right out of the gate in the fall. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the PTA under the category of climate and culture. They've done a ton of work at the middle school this year supporting us. This did not get into the school improvement plan, but I feel like I need to put it in there from now on, just to make sure they get that formal recognition. They support a whole bunch of initiatives that add to the climate and the culture of the middle school. Excuse me, volleyball night, lots of kids' night outs, they support the talent show. These are all fundraisers that go right back into student activities programs and support scholarships for big field trips for kids. This year, they're supporting our first-ever Fine and Performing Arts Night. So here's the plug. It's next Tuesday, the 10th, seven o'clock at Littleton High School, and we are combining our art show and our spring concert. And we're also going to have student work. Our online student newspaper, Ink Splash, will be there. We'll have poetry examples. We'll have an art auction going on, and there's a band called Itchy Feet with a pretty decent drummer, and they're closing the night. So it's really going to be a fun, it's a good plug, right? It's going to be a really fun evening at the high school to just celebrate all the fine and performing arts. There's a pizza dinner beforehand for all our performers, and Mr. Bergman and the theater kids are going to do cabaret in the cafeteria at the high school beforehand. So there's going to be dinner and music, auction, silent auction, art awards given out, concert, and then a little entertainment at the end. So if you're looking for a good, all-inclusive, fine arts night, that should be a great take next Tuesday night.
What time does it start?
Seven o'clock. And again, that's totally supported by the PTA. They came up with the concept, they came up with the food idea and the pizza beforehand, and they're supplying the parents who are really going to help. It's a big initiative from this up-to-grove art teacher to take all of the artwork and move it into someone else's building just for one night and then probably get out of there as quick as possible so the high school can move on with their day soon after that the next day. So we've got a lot of parent volunteers who have stepped up to make that happen, too. So we're excited about that. And finally, under climate and culture, we just had a fantastic event yesterday called the Day for Change. This is a great community-building activity that we did in the eighth grade, totally student-initiated by some wonderful kids who saw this at their cousin's school in another community a couple years ago. And Ms. Storfman and Ms. Bonacore took this over as an offshoot to our Second Step program. And it was all about community building and getting to know each other. And we've heard nothing but wonderful responses from the kids about how they feel like they learned more about their friends in one half-day than they did the entire school year. So we're talking about what we can do better and make that happen earlier in the school year and how we can kind of embed that into what we do at the middle school. So we're always looking to improve the climate and culture there. It's a fantastic school. I think people feel well-supported, but we need to listen and try to do better tomorrow than we do today in that category. And finally, under technology, we talked a lot about this, but a few things I highlighted on here that weren't in the past packets. I really want to talk about blended learning. I mean, we could throw so many different things at you in this category. Blended learning is the concept that takes the traditional classroom and the technology and really puts the combo of face-to-face and online learning in the same place at the same time. And so we've got teachers piloting Moodle and Edmodo this year. Edmodo is basically Facebook for education, but it's password-protected. And so it's a great way for teachers to create virtual space that kids can work on asynchronously outside of school, asynchronously in the classroom, and synchronously in the classroom. And so we've got at least three or four teachers using both Moodle and/or Edmodo right now in the classroom in really creative ways. So I'm excited about thinking about putting that kind of a subset or presentation together for you guys next year. We talk about this stuff all the time, and I don't know that we ever show it to you other than taking a tour through classrooms. Maybe we bring people in here and really demonstrate a mock classroom one night next year and take a good look at what that looks like so that you understand the difference between BYOD and what a flipped classroom is versus blended learning. I think that would be important, so we're using the same language, and you can really see the impact it has on our kids. So that's pretty much the most recent updates from the middle school. Proud of the work we've done this year. It's been a busy, busy act year, but it's been a lot of fun, and vacation's sounding pretty good right now.
Questions, Alex?
No.
No, I'm going to have a technology question when we get to policy subcommittee later.
Thank you. The one question I have is relative to Aspen usage, and Dr. Harrington talked about getting better formative assessments. And it doesn't necessarily have to be Aspen. I think that's the tool we have in place at the time. And Mark, you talked about 55 to 60%. You're going to quantify that number for us down the road, which I think is important. I think some people would jump out and say, wait a minute, is that, why is it only 60%? You talked about, you alluded to it, it's a new technology, and people are getting used to it and things like that. But where do we feel like as a district that we like, where do we stand relative to other districts? Are we ahead of the curve, on the curve, trailing the curve in terms of our ability to use that technology and our staff's ability to use it and our families, students and families' ability to take advantage of it?
I think there's a lot of questions in that question. I mean, so I'll...
Do you want me to handle that for you?
No, let me try, and then tell me if I'm off. I think anecdotally, I think we are a community that can support this. I think, and I don't want to speak for all four principals, but I think, I feel like I have a very good handle on which families have access and don't. We make a point of finding that information out every year, especially when we started moving to digital, online newsletters. So I think you have to know your community. So when you talk about how we stack up, I think we stack up relatively well, actually, as far as being ready for this. And there are communities that aren't ready for this for a lot of reasons, whether that's infrastructure inside the district, outside the district, or from a socioeconomic standpoint. I think we're right where everybody else is with the struggles of how many initiatives we've taken on in public schools right now. I don't want to get too deep into contract conversation tonight because we're in a good place with that, but we know that there are certain things we ask people to do, and there are certain things that they're required to do. And when we talk about websites and we talk about portals, I'm proud and very proud of the percentage of teachers at the middle school who take on these things that are not contractually obligated of them. So that's why I'm happy with that number right now. And I think good professionals in whatever industry they're in, when they realize something's right for their industry, they get on board. Some people do it the first day. You always have your people that just run with an initiative, and you have other people that are more thoughtful, and you have other people that know it's right, they've just got to learn it. So we've got a nice culture happening in the middle school with people in different places. And I do think that number's going to go up every year or every month. I mean, I think we had three or four teachers open it up third trimester. It just took them a little more time to get there, to understand why or how or what their percentages are going to be, or I really want to have it right so that I don't get questions of confusion. So I think we're in a good place for that. And I think we stack up well locally in this area, but I think it's really about how successful is it? And the parent survey that we're putting out has some questions about that, and internally, we ask a lot of questions. So I think we need to collect some data.
Kelly, do you have any, hold on, I'll try to continue. Do you have any?
Yeah, I agree. Baseline agree with what Principal Branko is saying. A lot of the challenges that we've had have been infrastructure-related. And we're to the point where we have the infrastructure, the trainings is in place, and now we're just developing confidence within staff. My desire would be to have it up and running 100% of the time. And geographically, it really depends on where you are. I mean, I've been fortunate. I've had great infrastructure. Ten years ago, I was using this technology, but it wasn't in Massachusetts. So we have to take those things into account. You also have to build capacity, and I think that's a key phrase that we need to continue to use in our district. If you expect too much too quickly, it takes you twice as long to get where you want to go. And you have to be skilled at determining the appropriate pace when you're implementing change. And I credit our district and our administrative team for using a high level of skill making those determinations. Our high school, through their network structure in itself, has been hindered in implementing technology and having teachers move ahead. That was corrected this last summer, and I've seen some great things happening throughout the year. Now, we just need to formalize them a little more as we move forward.
Alex, did you comment?
Yes, thank you. I think the question we all sort of ask ourselves is, what should that number be? And I like how you talked about building capacity. It's not just about what everyone else is doing. We want to be the best regardless of where everyone else is. I think everyone's on the same page there. Chuck's not here, so I'll ask it. What do the teachers need to get there? Capacity building, infrastructure from a technological standpoint? It sounds like we're getting those. Is it just a matter of time until they just adjust?
Yeah, they have everything technology-wise that they need, Alex. Right now, it's capacity and competence building. And we want to make sure that when people use a marker and assessment portal, that it's used properly because it can create complete pandemonium within seconds if people aren't proficient at using software programs like that.
And let me clarify that 100% of the teachers are using it for midterms and report cards. So I want to make sure that's actually clear. Everybody's using it.
It was the real time, 55 to 60%.
That 55 to 60% at least at the middle school is people who have really embraced this concept of just, hey, open it up in real time. So that's two different things.
It's a change of behavior. I remember, this was a while ago when I was a principalship, so over 15 years ago. I remember making that conversion as a principal, and laptops weren't that plentiful back then. And I always taught a class as a principal, so I just had to change my behaviors. Rather than writing it in a mark book, I would open up my program, and I would put the marks right into the program. And that way, it wasn't taking twice as long to do. So it takes a bit of time, and we have teachers that are at different proficiency levels. But at the same time, I've been so taken back by the empowerment with our staffs. I look at Shaker Lane's staff with an infrastructure that, for lack of a better word, is duct taped together. I mean, that's going to change this summer. They have done things way beyond my expectations of what I've seen with similar schools with similar technology. And it's all about capacity building. It's all about empowerment and instilling that desire to become the best that you can be. I was a witness to something the other day that was just, it rendered me speechless. And we have a student that can't attend school for a while. And what Shaker Lane did is get a tripod and put an iPad on the tripod, and the student was part of the class through his typing. And it's been done before, but for elementary school with a minimal network structure to do that and be successful is something to celebrate. It's very innovative, and it worked very well. So I really commend our staff for having that passion to meet every student's needs. And that just, folks, that just doesn't happen. It's a culture that creates that. And I think we've been very successful throughout time in creating that culture, being supportive and understanding and setting expectations together to achieve goals that we set.
With that in mind, you indicated that many, not many teachers, that some teachers have varying proficiencies with using Aspen. It sounds like that's the biggest one in the conference building, which are tied very closely together. Does that mean it's more PD? Is it more working across our teams?
Yeah, we're doing a lot of train to trainer, at least at the middle school. I'm sure that some of the other schools are going to roll some of this stuff out. So we have teachers who got it right away, and they're flying with it. And so they do everything from meet on their prep time to their lunch break, to before school, to after school, sometimes through modules in the PD. Yeah, it's just going to take a little bit more time to get it with them.
And embracing and, I guess, understanding that as a system, we have technology that's dependable. When I walked in the door three years, three months ago, we did the best that we could, but our technology wasn't dependable. For a teacher to invest the time to try to convert over to something like that and then only be able to use it 30% of the time, it doesn't pay off. It's inefficient. So the high school is at that cusp of realizing that that stability is there from September on. So it'll happen. It's going to take some time and some further training.
Good. All right, thank you, Mark. Kelly, do you have any closing comments on the SIPS in general?
Yeah, just, I'd like to thank the principals for their presentations. We've been working on time allocations for presentations, and we've done better this evening. It's always nice to have videos to display what's happening in the school, and children and their parents come to our meetings. It's a great time to celebrate. Please remember that we just really began actualizing this SIP or strategic plan in March. To be quite frank, most districts, when they're faced with converting over to a new strategic plan, put things on hold for a year. We didn't want to do that. We had the momentum. We had the empowerment to keep moving forward, so we did that. Sometimes I think, though, we need to talk about that a little more because we need to talk about our limitations when we do these things as well. It's amazing that our strategic plan, with the amount of time we've had it in place, has total alignment with everything that we do. That's because we did it the right way. We did it through transformational processes, not transactional processes. So I'm just really proud of how we made that transition to this point in time. We have lots more to do. It will fall into place.
I'd like to thank the teams that participated in that effort. We saw the principals up here making the presentations, and you all alluded to the fact that it wasn't you guys, it was a team effort. And it includes parents and community members, not just professional staff. So it's a big part of what goes on in our buildings and allows the community to have probably the biggest piece of participation is through those student improvement councils. So we'd like to thank everybody that was involved with that. It's obviously that there's a continued and sustained effort to move each building forward, and there's a plan in place, and it gets reevaluated on an ongoing basis. That's important, and it also affects the district as a whole. I particularly appreciated the demonstration explanations of how, using the goals that you set and the actions that are in place, seeing the demonstrations with the guests and the videos and stuff, how it informs learning and instruction in the buildings, how those SIPS are being used. It's obvious. So that's great. It's a big presentation, and I appreciate the amount of effort that was put into it. Thank you. All right, next, handbook revisions.
And this'll take no time at all, but Daryl and I have been working on some policies that are coming down the tube quite quickly. And as a result of that, to spare the principals some time, I'm going to pass these out. We've talked about chapter 222 around this table a number of times, and that has to deal with suspension of students, expulsion of students. In a nutshell, it puts more responsibility on schools to continue with programs after students, programming more correctly after students are suspended. So our handbooks have part A, and what I'm recommending is that we just make a blanket adoption of the new wording, which is the second paragraph, and I'll read it to you. Any school district that suspends or expels a student under this section shall continue to provide educational services to the student during the period of suspension or expulsion under section 21 of chapter 76. If the student moves to another district during the period of suspension or expulsion, the new district of residence shall either admit the student to its schools or provide educational services to the student in an educational service plan under section 21 of chapter 76. So that needs to be added to all of our handbooks as a blanket statement as we begin next year. The other changes, before I move on, are there any questions about that paragraph? We've had some opportunity to read the materials before, so it shouldn't be a surprise to you. If not, we'll move into the middle school. The middle school has minor change in the homework policy.
Yep. This is a quick one. We presented our new homework policy last year. We've had really nice feedback anecdotally from this. And again, this is going to be part of our parent survey, so we'll get some more quantified feedback. But one of the things that we're tweaking here is our policy around weekends. We had had homework-free weekends put in here, and it wasn't until we embedded them in our calendar that we realized in December, February, and April, that was a heck of a February, and April, that was a heck of a lot of homework-free weekends, because you had the vacations in there as well. And so there were some time crunches around that. So we discussed that with the parents at the school council level, the faculty of the school council level. So the only tweak to the weekend clause here, and I'll just read it, is that it says, "Due to the school vacations practices outlined below, there will not be homework-free weekends beyond those that are part of the scheduled school vacation in the months of December, February, and April." So in essence, we had given them basically two homework-free weekends a month, which was really a crunch in certain times of the year for kids and teachers. So that's the big change.
Any questions about that?
Discussion, questions, thoughts?
What is the crunch?
We looked at curriculum pacing, and we looked at some of the projects, and we looked at assessments, and this policy has required all of the teachers to make adjustments in those, and in our opinion, as a school council, for the better in a lot of ways. We've had to be more thoughtful of when we give assessments. If you read this thoroughly and through from last year, remember that we're avoiding Mondays after weekends and certain weekends.
So because you had fewer weekends to give homework, when you had the weekends to give it, you gave more?
Either we gave more, or we were given a few more assessments, back-to-back from more teachers. So eighth grade wound up doubling up on kids certain times of the year, and they just felt like it was crushing kids. Yeah. Anybody else?
Does this require any kind of vote or anything like that? Does this require any kind of vote on our part?
We would like a, actually, legally, you only need to vote on the high school handbook, but past practice has been, you voted on all changes of handbook, so I would prefer that we continue that practice. You can do them all at once if you would like, or wait, it's up to you as a school.
I just have a quick question. Going back to at the bottom of this page on 222, I may also want to review all sections where the disciplinary action is suspension. Is that related to 222, or does?
Well, we just want to make sure that their current practices fall into line with chapter 222. We don't want any stray statements made.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that was in addition to.
Yeah, I did take it off.
That's fine. Sorry for trying.
And it was a reminder for the principals to check their.
Because the new law requires that when we suspend students, we still have to provide certain types of educational support depending on the length of suspensions. And then there's reporting requirements. If an individual student is suspended even on one-day suspensions more than ten days, there's a reporting requirement now also. So it's just make sure that our disciplines match the intent of the law. Please just review them. Make sure they meet the intent of what you wanted for disciplinary actions.
So, John, we had a number of conversations, and I know one change we needed to take a look at in September, but was there another one tonight you wanted to bring up?
It was really simple, and it's a sentence. It's only a sentence, that's the only addition we have in our handbook change.
And the sentence?
Yeah. It's under our attendance section. There was some confusion around the absence. Just a few students that came up, and we thought this clarification would help. It was suggested by faculty. All absences, it's in the packet, and it's italicized in bold. All absences excused or unexcused are counted toward the total number of absences. There was some thought that if I had an excuse because I had a, a student had an excused absence, that it wouldn't count. We have to document per the law that if you're absent, you weren't present, regardless of the reason, it's noted. We had some requests from parents to delete an absence, even though the student wasn't, the student was not present, but they wanted it to be removed from the record. We couldn't do that because of the law. We just want to make that clear in our handbook. So that's what that section's about. And occasionally a student would ask for it to be removed because they had a valid reason, they were on a college visit or something like that, they were on a field trip, or, you know, that was not necessarily school-sponsored. It's an absence.
Was it a transcript concern?
I don't remember. We do record that sometimes.
What's the concern that the parents and students were having in terms of?
I think absences are recorded, if I'm correct, I think I'm correct here, on the report card, but not on the transcript. I'd check on that, Bill. And I'm curious to check that tomorrow morning. But we do report out absences, of course, in Aspen. Parents can track it that way now. So I think it's just, yeah, they wanted to have, show that, you know, students are something really important, valid. We don't dismiss that at all. But for safety reasons too, we have to record them as absent, who was present, who was not. So that's just a clarification, and that's the rationale behind it. We do expect next year, our handbook committee that was formed, it's a subcommittee of the school council, did make a recommendation to do a more comprehensive overhaul of the high school handbook next year. It's particularly related to formatting, making it very, there were a lot of suggestions around making it more user-friendly, people to read and find it, access what exactly what they're looking for. So there were a lot of great suggestions. It was inadequate time at the end of the year to do it, so what we'd like to do is work on that next year. And I don't know how that impacts the rest of the handbooks. We'll look to superintendent for guidance on that, because we try to have a handbook that is streamlined and is uniform and consistent, K-12s or pre-K-12s. But the high school has, as you know, has some different issues, it has a lot of more detailed language because of the types of issues we deal with. Thank you.
Yeah, we're ready for a motion.
I move that we update the high school handbook to reflect chapter 222 and the changes as read. The middle school homework policy for weekends, and the absence from school from the high school also, to include the sentence, all absences excused or unexcused are counted toward the total number of absences, and that they'll be made part of the minutes for this meeting, since it was a little bit jumbled there, okay?
Motion made.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If there is no discussion, I'll call for a vote on the motion. If anyone's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Recognition.
Just a couple of things. Our sports season is quickly coming to a close. I can't believe how quickly this year has gone by. And we retreated last night to a wonderful art show at Shaker Lane. There were just hundreds and hundreds of pieces of artwork displayed throughout the building. And it takes a lot of time to set something like that up. And they had pizza, and kind of a treasure hunt to find different symbols on pictures, and it was packed. It was just so great to see. Kids were having a great time, and the parents were able to see their work, snapping pictures, et cetera. So it was a great evening, and I'd like to extend my thanks to the staff and the students that made that possible. And tomorrow night, as we all know, is our culminating activity for our school district. We have our high school graduation beginning at six-thirty. If all things go as planned, and the clouds have rained themselves out, we will be having graduation on the field, football field. So, John, putting a lot of pressure on you to try to make that happen, since last year we didn't succeed.
Were there any seniors in the meteorology class?
We're watching it closely. Last year was an easy decision. This year was a little touch and go, but we feel pretty good about it.
Good.
Point's that decision made.
To go in or out?
Yeah.
Right about an hour before we have the ceremonies. A little bit of pressure last year, to say the least. But everything's set up for the two scenarios anyway, so.
Great. One if I win, and one if I see.
All right, good. Moving on to old business. In our packets, we have the finalized copy of the subcommittee appointments. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Do you need a motion?
No.
I just brought it back so that you can see it.
Don't forget what you're supposed to be doing, make sure you do it. All right, next is superintendent evaluation. Daryl, we're going to pass it on to you, and you'll leave us out.
Sure. So what I'd like to do is, I took, everybody sent me their individual reports. I compiled those into one overall summary one. I believe the previous chair had met with the superintendent to review them. What I propose for tonight is that we go sort of, there's a couple of different ways we could do it. We could go sort of section at a time, have everybody just sort of give what their overall assessment in that area is, or I could either, or I could overview what the roll-up assessment was, and then provide opportunity for people to provide clarifying comments. I could do it either way here, depending on what level of detail you'd like to go into tonight.
Let's just each of us give our assessment, and then we finally give the opportunity for the superintendent to respond, and then we get to a summation and perhaps take a vote as to the finalized product that Daryl's prepared, which becomes the signatory element for the superintendent's final evaluation.
Alex?
John, can you?
Sure. Okay, so I'll work off of the overall summary assessment and then provide everybody an opportunity to provide individual comments there. So there's four standards here. First one is instructional leadership, second is management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. I'll do those ones first, and then we'll do the goals, you know, it's listed in the other order here. So the overall assessment, merged assessment and instructional leadership was exemplary, and the comment centered around the leadership in working with the, all of the district-wide initiatives, creating the new strategic plan, implementation of the educator evaluation system, and all of the other continued efforts in curriculum development and improvement there. And I can let the individual members comment later on their own observations there. In management and operations, the overall assessment was also exemplary, where the continued focus on meeting the needs of diverse learners was a continued initiative, and the steps and activities underway to address those needs, as demonstrated by the evidence in the packets from the classroom visits, the educational opportunities to involve, excuse me, to observe in an informal manner, and the staff contact there. Also, the alignment of the district plan to the strategic plan, to the improvement plans, was noted as a key activity there. In family and community engagement, the overall assessment was also exemplary, and that covered, you know, all of the, excuse me, make sure I get the right one, here, in terms of working with the administrators, providing, you know, exemplary direction, developing practices consistently showcasing the high expectations of the district, and as those being implemented through the staff. The organization and implementation of the budget, the cost centers and the budget management throughout the system. The monitor strategies and processes to evaluate the needs throughout the year, setting high expectations for the leadership team, and the leadership of the administrative team in terms of developing.
Sorry, Daryl, I think you jumped into professional culture on that.
Did I catch one?
Yeah.
Catched the wrong one?
You started, you prefaced with family and community engagement, but the things you're citing sound more like, to me, like professional culture.
You know what, I might have cut the wrong page on that. I'm sorry about that.
You look so similar.
I know. Family and community, communications, family concerns. And you know what, I think I tacked along.
Two of one and none of the other?
I'm looking at the page eight of seven, seven of seven, the template, and I read up the pages correctly for me. Looking at the communications initiatives throughout the district, from his own communications to the district, as well as its being implemented by the staff, all the way down through, we've seen a significant increase in community outreach, which I think was noted by all of the, all of the members here. And then finally, professional culture. The overall rating was proficient in there. And let me see, this one here was, we may want to discuss how the roll-up actually worked on this, because we had mixed scores on it, because the individual scores showed three exemplaries and one proficient, and I think the individual scores showed a slightly different piece there. So I think we might want to discuss what the overall rating for that, this final category is here. But again, this one here focused on the communications outreach to the community, the emphasis on continuous learning, the shared vision, particularly with the strategic plan and the implementation of it directly into the, into the district, as well as the process that created it, created a whole district-level buy-in of where we were going with that. And I think that was highly noted by all of the members here. And we also noted the communications, both face-to-face as well as through email with the various boards and committees and other, other members of the staff and leadership team here that we deal with on it. So the sense that I got from the overall compilation was exemplary there. The two goals that were underway, professional practice goals and student learning goals, those are well underway, and I think everybody rated those as met to exceed. So I think the overall ratings on those were meeting, meeting the progress goals and where we're expecting to be at with the pieces there. The, I got the terminology right, since the DDMs will not be in place for another year or so, the measure of those goals against student learning impact will be deferred until the formal metrics come out for that there. So at this point, we're really assessing the progress towards implementing those goals and meeting those goals. So I think the sense, I got the sense from the committee is overall is being very pleased with the performance of the superintendent, and like I said, I think the aggregate assessment is exemplary. And I'll turn it over to you, Mike, to consolidate any individual clarifying remarks or comments.
I'll leave it up to you guys.
Sure. What are we, how do you want to do this, Mike?
I mean, I think at this point, I think we just go ahead and give our individual, you know, if you want to concur.
Per age standard?
Yeah, I think we just go down, yeah, just go down through each standard.
So, under professional practice goals and student learning goals, I think as Daryl mentioned, the majority of the committee, the entire committee saw that Kelly had either met or exceeded those goals. I believe he met them. Under standard one, instructional leadership, I had indicated it needs improvement, some strengths, some weaknesses there. I think we are probably on the right path there. Standard two, proficient, that's management and operations. Standard three, family and community engagement, exemplary. And standard four, professional culture, proficient, for an overall rating of proficient. Does anyone have any questions for that, or more detail, less detail, can't take anything back, I've already said, in terms of, more detail?
Nope.
All right. Did you?
Done? I thought you were going to go through it all the way.
No, 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 unless anyone has any questions, then I will happily answer them.
So, first off, folks, not everybody realizes, but this is a public evaluation of our superintendent. So think about your own jobs out there, if you're out in the public on television, so the world can see that you're being evaluated by your bosses. We'd all probably cringe at that a little bit, you seem very relaxed and comfortable there. As Daryl did say, when I was still the chair, I did meet with Kelly, because we had aggregated, and we each did our individual, burned together, presented to Kelly so that we could have that sort of discussion, if there was disagreement, as to maybe we misunderstood something in an evaluation area, so that we could get that straightened out. And we did have that opportunity. And I would like to add that over the years, to say I've seen thousands of evaluations of people, that's not an understatement. So I've seen very many, and senior leaders, not only seen them, but have authored them, written them, and have endorsed others after they've written them on senior leaders. Kelly's the fourth superintendent in my tenure here on the school committee, and it's always tough to rack and stack when you've had good superintendents. But Kelly is the best one that we've had this, that I've seen on the school committee. What I would like to add to that, too, is that we look at the leadership that he's provided across the entire school district. It is top to bottom. He's down there meeting with the children, and then with the teachers, the staff, and the administrators. That's the central office, and that's the building administrators. He's out there, it's management by walking around. We talk about open-door policies. Some people think if they keep their door open, people will walk in. That's not the way an open-door policy works for me. Kelly's open-door policy is he walks out the door and goes to the people. And that's how you exhibit leadership, because you're down there with folks and learning from them at the same time you're teaching them. And that's something I have seen also, in that he is a teacher, he's an educator. And it's not just an educator of children, it's an educator of the adults that are in the system also. He works closely with the parents, communicative skills are exemplary. What he's been able to do, cool, calm, collected is an understatement as to how cool, calm, and collected Kelly remains in each and all occasions. When we interviewed him for the job, that's one of my biggest observations was his ability to maintain the measure and to stay calm and be able to assess the situation, take corrective action, and work forward. He's exceeded my expectations from that time three years ago, three-plus years ago now that it is. So I'm exemplary across the board with Kelly. His leadership across the board is exemplary, what he's done for the entire district. We've seen the improvements. that it is. So I'm exemplary across the board with Kelly. His leadership across the board is exemplary, what he's done for the entire district. We've seen the improvements. The school district is an ascendancy, and it's the children who are the beneficiaries of all of this, and the community at large. So Kelly, I'd like to say a very well job done, and thank you.
Thank you, those kind words. Darryl, do you want to put some personal, rather than just doing the summation for all of us, do you have a personal board of you you want to go through?
Well, no, I think I'm okay.
What I'd just like to say is, this is a new tool, this is the same type of tool that will be used across the district for all the teachers and administrators. I thought it was a good tool, I thought the tools we've used in the past, I think you've done a great job, Darryl, of helping us do a good job with the tool that we use. But I thought this one was an improvement, I enjoyed looking at it and thinking about it. I think it's more definitive in terms of breaking out particular aspects of what the job entails and then being able to measure the performance. In terms of, you know, needs improvement, professional exemplary, I'll be honest, I put a couple of proficient's in there, but I think we talked about it, it's really, it's just because we haven't had enough time, in terms of like educator evaluation is an example, we just haven't had enough time to implement it fully across the board to be able to make a firm determination about whether or not it's been done in an exemplary point of view relative to the superintendent's leadership on those particular issues. But I like what PJ said, Kelly, I think you're doing a great job. I think it's reflected in the verbiage that we put in the, in our comments, and I think it's easily reflected in the actual, you know, the quantitative scores. I would like to say, this is one of the big three things that we do, we do the budget, we do policy, and we hire and oversee the superintendent. So this is a big effort for us, I appreciate, Darryl, what you've done in terms of organizing it and compiling the material. It's an important aspect of what we do. So again, Kelly, I think you've done a great job, I'm looking forward to the next year. At this point, I'd like to throw it to you to see, you did a self-assessment, and what your comments are relative to your self-assessment versus what you saw coming back from the rest of the school committee members.
Oh, thank you. Well, thank you for those kind words. The self-assessment, what I saw in the report from most of you was very, very similar to my own self-assessment. As a leader, I'm an advocate of continued improvement, I don't think you've ever reached that, that point. And that's how, how we operate our school district. We always can become better and will become better with time. In terms of calmness, I was, I was thinking when you said that, I guess after 15 years of being a superintendent and leading three regionalizations, you either learn how to be calm or you go into some sort of therapy. Because regionalizations, if you think what we do here is transformational, you should be involved in a regionalization and all that comes with it. It's not just your staff, it's communities and beyond, plus state government that you're dealing with. And it's a skill set that I would love everybody to see, but I wouldn't want everybody to live through it, I'll put it that way, because it's a different environment. I'm excited about where we are in this district. We have had, had good leaders in the district for many years. And we've seen an evolution of best practice coming up from, from the leadership teams and our staffs. I've seen much more stability in the time that I've been here with not only teachers, but with administrators and folks. If you, if you want to become the best, you need to keep your staff. Because if you have a turnover that's too significant, you're going to be backpedaling or falling down the rungs of your ladder to a certain degree. Consistency and vision, consistency and mission. The days of dictatorship of mission and vision are long over, that's what I call transfer, transactional leadership. Effective school movement in the seventies, I hate to admit it, but I was part of it. And it was good for the small group of people that thought they were making a difference, but it really didn't result in sustainable change. So we've employed a leadership approach in this district that is not only transformational, but empowering, interactive. And we employ a concept called leadership for learning, and it's working. Is it an approach that's quick? No, but if you want quick leadership, you're not going to have sustainable change in terms of decision-making. There are two kinds of decisions that need to be made. There are transactional decisions that are management-oriented, and before you can lead, the transactional decisions need to be in place, and they need to be well-set and well-rooted. But unfortunately, as a leader, you can, you can stay in a rut with transactional change because that will take your whole day up and beyond. And the trick to leadership is to move beyond those transactional changes, making sure they're in place, and then engaging in something called true leadership. And it's magical to a certain extent, there's no recipe. And I believe it can be taught, but not from textbooks, from learning on the job and responding to various situations. So I'm humbled by your comments, and I'm excited about the upcoming years and continuing to work with the community and the staff and the students and the parents to continue to do incredible things.
You know American football, too, right?
I do.
Vince Lombardi?
Not extra down, though, you know, it's hard to take it.
Vince Lombardi?
Yes.
You done for me lately?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we do need a, we need a motion to put this into the record.
So we're comfortable with the way you've compiled it, Darryl?
So what I want to make sure that I've transcribed in terms of the overall piece here, recognizing we had differences in individual scores, but I think when they rolled up, the sense that I got from the overall assessment was on the professional practice goal and student learning goals met there. Under standards one, two, and three, the majority consensus was exemplary. And I had under professional culture proficient, but I wasn't sure how, that one was a little inconsistent in how I did the roll-up, and I'd like to just make sure I post the committee on that, that final assessment of that score, recognizing Chuck is not here today to do that. So the final piece I had was standards one, two, and three exemplary, and standard four proficient, with an overall summary performance of exemplary.
All right, is there any discussion on that, or?
Well, will the individual evaluations also be entered as part of the record?
Yes, they are public record.
Yes, they are.
They are public record.
They are. So the, the formal assessment that I guess goes with Kelly's file is the overall committee evaluation. Part of the record is all of the individual assessments.
Right. And will those be in the packet or online?
We, we don't post evaluations online, Alex.
They are public record, and they are part of the meeting, and we do post most of what's done at the meeting in the packet.
If you allow me to finish, they will be contained in the, in the package like we do normally. So I guess you can access them online if you so choose. But we don't have a separate category on our website, for example.
That's right. But in terms of what's in the packet, will we be able to post it online in a packet?
That's up to the school committee.
I'd like to make a motion that we include this material as part of the packet for tonight's meeting.
Okay. Excuse me.
Okay.
What packet? When you say a packet?
The agenda and packet for the materials, because the materials, the packet we use every night and the packet we put online.
Are you asking will it be part of the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Including the documentation online.
It's a public meeting, so I guess that's maybe why you had us confused.
Sure.
Because we didn't know about a special packet?
Oh, no. No, same, same packet.
That was my confusion as well.
So I don't think we needed an extra motion, you'll get to vote on it next meeting to approve the minutes, and this will be in it.
All right. Including the documentation?
Yes, and I don't know why the continued question. The evaluation will be included, Alex.
I just want to make sure that-
I think the evaluation, the evaluation is, the documentation is the evaluation, there is no evaluation without the documentation.
That's right, I just wanted to make sure it was not just a sort of a summary of what, of what took place, but also including, including the materials.
Eight pages?
Each, each one is about eight pages.
Okay. So you can anticipate six, eight-page packets, how's that?
Three.
Five individuals, one overall.
Great.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good.
All right, so we're good on, on the summary, and your concern in terms of the content of the package is addressed, okay? Are you good then? Do you know what you're going to put in there? What you're going to finalize with that? Do you have another question, or do you have the direction you need?
I think I'm all set.
All right.
Yeah, I do want to be clear on that, because that's where the real ambiguity was. Because you had three exemplaries and one proficient?
Yes.
And for overall, is whether or not to go proficient or exemplary?
Overall was exemplary, based on the three exemplaries and the one proficient.
And we're all content with that? Is that the, I'm content?
I'm content with that also.
Okay, good.
Okay, so I think I have what I need to, I'll make sure that, I'll make sure that these align correctly and the page numbers are corrected on the one there. And I believe I have everybody's latest copies, including Chuck's, there that I'll bundle up, bundle up and send to the superintendent.
I move that we approve the superintendent's evaluation as compiled by Darryl.
Second? I'll second. You have a second? All right, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no, those unanimous, all right, thank you.
So you get together with Kelly for signatures and stuff?
Yep. All right, superintendent's report.
Can I ask a little bit about old business?
Sorry.
A letter on the High School intersection to Mass Highway, hey Chris, copies to the state rep, state senator, go now. That's about two weeks ago now. Any response?
Not at this point in time.
All right, superintendent's report. Sorry, any other old business? No, superintendent's report.
I included a little bit of reading in your packet on the Park versus MCAS component of where the state is heading. And I have a recommendation by our leadership team to endorse the jumping into Park next year, kid eight, actually, three to eight. And to maintain MCAS administration in high school, and the reason for maintaining MCAS administration in high schools is because they need to change the actual law. They're going to only use MCAS resolves for graduation until 2018. So they haven't changed that yet. So we certainly don't want to double test at this point in time. You read the information. I spent a lot of time thinking about this, and we've had a number of meetings at the leadership table around it, talked to a lot of superintendents, talked to state officials. And when our recommendation came out, we looked at a couple of basic things in terms of why do we want to promote Park, grade three to eight? And when you look at what's going to happen in the future, if the state, for some reason, doesn't endorse Park, they're going to redo MCAS anyway. So that, that was one thing we looked at, but that wasn't the driving force. We found, when we talked to staff, when we watched the exams being administered, that our students were generally quite, quite thrilled with doing online testing, which was really interesting. We weren't sure what kind of reaction we were going to have. We thought we were going to have that reaction, but it's a whole different medium doing an online test. I don't know how many of you around this table have had an online test before, I'm sure Alex has. And it's a, it's a different medium to work in. Also, when we, we looked at the caliber of the tests, the Park test really did hit higher-order thinking and problem-solving, far better than MCAS did. And as we've said many times, those critical thinking skills are skills that our students need to be successful as they continue their educational journey. Was the pilot as smooth as it could be? No, but I think we did an excellent job of figuring out what we needed to do. We were thinking on our feet. We, we weren't adventurous enough to try to do the test online. I've already had experience doing that many, many times, and unless you know it's tried and true, you just don't do it, because there are too many things that can go wrong. So we downloaded and distributed the test that way, and it worked out really well. I'm, I guess as a superintendent, I'm excited that we're looking at question design in a different manner rather than the old way of designing questions. We have interactive questions now with Park. I think that's a very important component of creating opportunities for students to look at assessments and be excited about them. You're not looking at a parallelogram anymore that just does nothing, that's black and white, and is boring. You're looking at assembling geographic shapes and moving things around and then using a higher-level application from, from that basic model. So those are some of the things that we, we looked at as a leadership team prior to bringing this recommendation to you this evening. I believe there are 18, it's hard to get an exact number, 18 states that are still on board with Park. And as we move forward, it's really going to, what's going to determine whether Park exists, in my opinion, is whether or not they have enough states to fund the program. So you need enough states on board to be able to spread the cost out to make this exam technology work. It's expensive, and so is MCAS. But that would be one of the determining factors for the state as they move forward. But if they're going to have to redo MCAS anyway, they probably have a very Park-like test in the end. So to make a long story short, with a lot of conversations, I hope you found the reading beneficial. And do you have any questions?
That's good. I think throughout the year, as we've all been having these conversations and as the admin team has been briefing us, I think the common message is the Park type of critical thinking is where we need to be. It's going to be a bumpy road to get there, it's not going to be perfect, not going to be a smooth transition. It might be happening a little faster than we want, but that is sort of where we want to end up. And I think this is a good recommendation from the leadership team. My question, question is in terms of timeline, with keeping the MCAS at the high school, but not three to, three to eight, in anticipation of a possible change in the law, moving from an MCAS high school graduation requirement to a Park graduation requirement, our students will have already experienced Park, grades three to eight. So even though we're not doing it in the high school, that doesn't mean we're going to be unprepared if that change does take place, because presumably it would still be a grade 10 test. So unless it happens for the next, what, year or two, everyone will already have experienced the Park type of test.
Right.
Which I think is, you know, a really good, good approach, because it means that we can still maintain, you know, we can still follow the law in terms of, in terms of MCAS and not double test, but we're still preparing our students for that possibility that will be tested at the high school level on Park. My only concern then is, of course, the opposite. If we remain the same, if we keep using MCAS at the high school level and the law doesn't change, will our students be prepared for Park? Or will our students who are taking Park be prepared for MCAS? But I think in terms of the critical thinking component, I think Park is a, as you said, a higher level of thinking, and also probably a higher bar for students to try to make. So it might be easier to go, if you've been taking Park, most of your education, it might be easier to go to MCAS rather than if you're doing MCAS most of your education and moving to Park.
Very true. And we're still not eradicating all our paper and pencil tests in the district. So we'll still be having the typical way of writing tests, so to speak, for lack of a better phrase.
Do you need a motion?
Well, I would give some more discussion.
Yeah, so I've been following the Park discussion on the MASC mailing lists and the, and actually, I've expressed my frustration with the piloting and the, and the other parts of it here. But at the same time, this train is moving, and I just don't see it worthwhile by spending our energy fighting it in terms of, you know, we, we need to keep moving on in the district and continuing, you know, figuring out what the debate going on in the state and the, and the other pieces there, they're going to change the test, whether it be MCAS, be it Park, or be it the other test, which I can't find the name, that they're piloting elsewhere in the country here. They're running into the-
Smarter Balance.
Smarter Balance, they're running into the exact same issues at every single school committee meeting and discussions and other pieces here. It's like, change is going to come, let's spend our energy moving forward rather than fighting the change. So I, I support this recommendation here.
You mentioned the test was online, but then you talked about downloading tests, which was it, online or paper?
Well, they're, they're online tests, but they're, they're downloaded to a server and then distributed and then uploaded, once they're done.
What'd you say, distributed? On paper?
No, 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 to different terminals, computer, yeah.
Okay, so it's online testing?
Right. Right, it's just a-
Just not real-time, on a central server, okay.
And by, by, even older people have done online tests, like lots of types.
Pardon?
Even older people have done online tests.
Oh, I have, of course.
You said eighteen states are still on board. How many began?
Twenty, I think it was, wasn't it? Twenty?
It was less than half, but it was bigger than Smarter Balance.
Why are some states coming off?
If I had that answer, I'd be buying stocks, but ...
Well, you just provided me a segue, thank you, on the buying stock piece. And that's our Commission of Education here in the state of Massachusetts' relationship with Park at a business level, where he's on that Board of Directors. And we know that's a controversy across the entire state. And it's an unsettled controversy at this point, and it's a disturbing one at this point. There has been an ethics determination that he is not in violation because he's not paid at this point. But there's been no determination or at least no restriction as to how long he may not go work for the organization prior to, assuming, following his termination as commissioner. And frankly, how'd you put it? The trains left the station? Did you say it that way?
Yeah.
And the engineer has been the commissioner against ... and you said not to fight it, because indeed, a lot of people have been putting the fight up. Because it's easier to give up on the fight, it doesn't necessarily mean it's progress. There are a lot of things you said, and then we also talked about MCAS perhaps being altered to come up with this more open concept, as you described, more critical thinking. I don't understand the push immediately at this point to say that we want to put the children in these Park tests and then see what happens, if the state law changes or if it doesn't change. I don't see the efficacy of making the move at this point, based on that kind of logic. That the Park test itself may be nice and enjoyable. Kids had a great time playing with the computers, because they are still getting used to the computers. Are you shaking your head, Mark?
I'm sorry.
Those are the words you all use. They enjoy taking the test.
I haven't used any of those words, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I apologize. I'll wait.
So that's where I see this at this point. Seems we want to be aggressive. Is there a timeline that poses us to be aggressive?
Well, that's ... that brought us to having to make a decision. There's a June 30th timeline to commit. Now, they also opened up the fact that you can change your mind by October 1st, but you may not be guaranteed that you'll be allowed to jump into whatever you're jumping into, because the seats may be filled. So there's a monetary component in terms of how much money they can spend on each exam. To give you a little more information, I didn't want to get into the technical component, because you have it in your package, but what also helped with our decision is when you look at the technical part, and they did that crossover rating in terms of SGP scores. That, for me, was an important factor, because if ... we need assessments that we can use to determine how well our students are doing through a period of time. And if they wouldn't have been able to do that crosswalk over, I would be talking to you very differently tonight. But for me, that was a very important point.
And you're convinced they've done a good enough job there?
They have. You know, the people, I have to say, the statisticians that they have at the department, I trust. I can't say that all the time, but I do trust the statisticians.
All right.
And I have significant concerns as well. I mean, we're literally weeks from having taken it one time and not across the board in terms of the district, and none of us, none of the districts in Massachusetts have implemented this fully. And I get it, you're not going to implement it fully in a pilot program. But in terms of the amount of time since we finished taking it and to make a determination of this magnitude seems folly to me. Not us, but that the state is asking all of us to make that kind of determination on that kind of timeframe seems ridiculous. I mean, the whole thing has been somewhat ridiculous to begin with. PJ alluded to some of the conflicts and, you know, it's been hard for me as a school committee member to really put my arms around Park because of the way it's been introduced. And I'm using a euphemism there, because I really don't feel like it's been introduced. I feel like it's been rammed right into us. I understand the issues in terms of it's a good test, your professional opinion is that it is a challenging test, that it's beneficial to the kids to take it. I would argue that the concepts that it's testing, there are other ways that we can get to that goal without necessarily embracing Park right now, today. And I'm struggling with, you know, the fact that you, the admin team, who I have a lot of respect for as professionals, that, you know, you're ready to move forward with this. And there's no question in my mind that if we do decide to move forward, that it will be beneficial to the district as a whole. I just struggle with the alternatives, timing, cost, opportunity cost, all those things. I just don't feel like we've really been given the benefit of deliberation to make sure that this is a good idea. And when I say "we," I'm kind of talking about the royal "we," not just Littleton. I'm a little hesitant to entertain a motion tonight, because this is a situation where we've heard some dissenting opinion, and I'm not quite sure how it's going to go. And I, without the fifth member here, I'm not sure I really want to entertain a motion, because I'd hate to see it go 2-2 and die like that. I don't think that's appropriate. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, my concern, of course, is a June 30 deadline.
Right. What's our meeting schedule? I'm sorry, I'm trying to determine if we can address that versus our meeting schedule.
We don't have actually any other meetings until middle of the summer, when we have a retreat.
Right. So we were talking about having another meeting. Do we not?
No, we decided not.
We decided not to do that? Well, I mean, we can always meet, right? We can always post, meet, and deal with this, right? If we had to before June 30th.
We can. Again, when I look at this as a totality, it's one test. So to me, as your superintendent, I'm not going to sit up here and profess that, my goodness, folks, we need to die on the hill for this. I'm not going to do that. It's one test, one fixed point in time. But what's interesting for me as a superintendent, who's been a leader in a number of states and provinces, is this is the first time I've been involved in policy change of this magnitude, where the waffling, not of the school committee, but of the state, keeps going on. If you recall, not too many months ago, I had a memo on my desk that said it was my full authority as a superintendent to make the decision, and which I presented to you at that time. And then something happened during that time. And personally, I think it is a joint decision, and that's what we're doing here this evening. I think it's important, as stewards of the district, you should be involved in those decisions. To me, I take this as a signal that you just want to be sure, so you're showing some caution. There's nothing wrong with that. And as a superintendent, I would rather have people that showed caution, had the courage to show caution, than to sit back and do something just because we have a timeline.
I think what I'd like to ask for you guys is that we table this for the moment, and if I, as the chair and the superintendent, feel like we need to deal with this before the next time we meet, which will be past the June 30th, and we can all figure that out together, then we'll post, we'll meet, and we'll deal with it. And there's a lot going on, there's a tremendous amount of discussion going back and forth, so it wouldn't surprise me if that June 30th deadline, whether it moved or if it doesn't move, if it's not held as stringently as other deadlines might be, I think we'll be okay. I think we can manage that, if that's okay with everybody else to just ... And again, I'm not saying it just because I want to kick the can down the road. I really want the fifth member here. That's my ... If Chuck were here, we would deal with it. There's no question we could deal with it, and we would have the motion and the vote. But I really feel like, given that the dialogue that's going back and forth, we need that fifth member, we need to be able to do this with five people in the room rather than even number. So is that okay?
We had had, about four or five weeks ago, I think, we had scheduled a second meeting in June, and that was later removed. Can we add that back?
Gee, it wasn't scheduled, it was a mistake. Plus, there's high school, middle school graduation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that might doesn't necessarily work.
It was suggested, not scheduled.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can use a day, it won't be that day, but we can use a day. But I don't think we need to pick the day yet. Let's just sit on it a little bit and ...
Give it some more thought, and, you know, then ...
Really, what I'm going to rely on is the superintendent. What I'd like you to do is think about how much, how important you think it is for us to vote on it before that June 30th deadline. If you do end up ultimately feel it's important, then we'll meet, we'll post, we'll meet, and we'll do it. If we, if you make a recommendation that you don't think it's that important, and we agree, then we can skate past that. We'll deal with it the next time we meet. I think that'll be okay. If anybody, if you feel, if we, if we're monitoring what's going on and we feel as a group that, no, it needs to get dealt with before that, then we'll just post and meet and deal with it and be okay with that.
So is that all right?
All right, I appreciate that. Because I really want Chuck to be able to have a chance with that, because it sounds like it's meaningful to all of us.
I would feel, I would feel a little more comfortable if we, if we agreed, you know, noncommittally, agreed to meet before that date, unless it turns, unless we have some information that changes regarding, or we find that that date is less stringent or whatever the change may be.
I would offer it a date that somebody from the administration at the state has put on a piece of paper, and when I hear, well, he could change his mind through October 1st, given the commission is a commitment to this particular program, he'd be happy at midnight on September 30th to take another district in the fold. I see no urgency in that particular deadline.
I mean, I agree with you. I don't think they have any leverage. I mean, it's, they need us, we don't need them, per se. There's no penalty, right, other than you wouldn't be participating. And if they make a blanket change and the statute changes, then it doesn't matter, that's out of our hands. So, you know, I don't think that ... And we're still not saying no. I mean, none of us is saying no. It's just a question of, do we deal with it next week or three weeks from now, you know, past that June 30th deadline? And we're not, we're not saying we won't meet, Alex. I mean, we can meet.
Is there a cost analysis associated with this?
For the district or beyond?
Well, the cost of district versus cost. But if we implement this versus MCAS, if it's 10 cents difference, you know?
Well, there won't be any difference. We're set up for it. The pilot, there was a, there wasn't an increase in cost, but there was a lot of redirecting job responsibilities to make it work. We saved a lot of costs by redeploying staff to make it work.
But they weren't doing something else.
Yeah, that's my concern, is that there's not a dollar cost, there's an effort cost that's not insignificant.
But to just clarify that, part of the reason for that was because the testing company really could have done a better job of sending out materials to us. I mean, they put an 80-page manual in front of you. It's not the easiest way to learn how to use the programs, so. All right. Are we ready to move on, Mr. Chairman?
I believe so. I think we got consensus. We'll continue to monitor, and it'll either get dealt with prior to June 30 or soon after June 30, as soon as we have all five of us together.
Sounds good. Update on special education programming. I sent all of you a table today, looking at some movement of staff, by the way, which we do every year. Our staff follows our students in terms of needs. We had an added challenge this year, and just before Rita starts, I just wanted to mention that to you. We all agreed around this table that we needed additional support from a trained professional in our high school to deal with students that were struggling in certain areas. When we were faced with putting more money into our budget to make it work, we already had a motion on the table, but as a superintendent, I felt greater pressure in terms of funding and available funds to make something work. There's no money tree, we all know that. So during our reorganization meetings, Rita and I looked at this twofold, deploy staff, we redeploy staff according to student needs, we took a look at three evaluations that we had in special education this year. Tried to redeploy staff with some of those recommendations. In the end, we were able to redeploy staff, move a special education teacher to the high school because of the new program that we need in the high school that we've talked about before, and hire an additional, I'm not going to call him a psychologist, although it's on, your table is a psychologist, to provide the needs of, provide for the needs of high school students predominantly, and some middle school students. We've been able to do that within our budget. So I just wanted to put that on the table. That wasn't easy feat, but I feel good about the plan. And Rita will explain more details to Cory.
Again, I want to begin by saying I'm presenting this plan, but it really was a plan born of collaboration. Yeah, I believe it started with guidance from Superintendent Clenchey about the priorities of the district, and it also involved a lot of compromise and discussion from principals. And I get to work a lot with principals on many matters, and I must say, I think that this is one of the more creative areas, because this is building infrastructure. Just as we talk about infrastructure for our technology, this is the infrastructure of people, which is just as important and sometimes harder to try to figure out. So again, as Superintendent Clenchey was saying, each year, an administrative team has to go through this process. There is a natural ebb and flow of change that happens, because the needs of children's will change, they will increase, they will decrease, and also the children move from grade to grade and also school to school. And so they have to match up with the services as they have been the year before and what we need as they go forward. We also had to take into account this year some of the findings that came from two program evaluations that we contracted for with Walker Partnerships. One was for the preschool, and one was for the K-12 continuum. And I think it's important that we get an understanding of what we mean by the K-12 continuum, because I think this will be mentioned also in our coordinated program review. And I think what it means here for us, and it's been hard to find the right term to sort of call this, but if we think of it in terms of tiers, because I think a lot of faculty and some parents also are used to thinking of it in terms of tiers, when we say tier one, that really refers to the general curriculum. It's what children typically receive through the general education program. Tier two is a remedial level of service that we provide students, or it can also be an IEP that provides a service such as speech and language, occupational therapy, or physical therapy, that allows a student to access the general curriculum. Tier three, we usually refer to students who are on IEPs, because they have a modified curriculum. So again, they're getting the service, an academic service, usually from a special educator, or they're getting related service. And so this new tier we're calling tier four is really students whose needs go beyond the typical level of a tier three. These are students who have needs that we really need to be providing for. So at the preschool level, and you can see from the chart, we currently have four classrooms at the preschool level. Two are five-day programs, one is a four-day program, one is a three-day program. That staffing remains the same. As a matter of fact, one of the classrooms in the three-day program is increasing from a .6 to a .7. We also had two special education staff who supported the preschool. These are teachers who are outside of the classroom that can go into the classroom or pull students out. Last year, or this year, rather, we have had two teachers, a .8 and a .7 position. And looking at the needs going forward, we felt we could meet the needs of the students with just a .8 position, which left us with the resources of that .7. We also had an early childhood coordinator position, and this is important to tie back to the preschool evaluation. One of the findings of the evaluation is that we really needed to increase the administrative oversight for this, and the early childhood coordinator has many, many different roles. And it was really funded at a .2, which is essentially one day a week, which is really quite hard to do for a program, as you can imagine, for classrooms, all the need to go out to the community, find children who are in settings who might need early intervention. So again, we didn't want to go, as an administrative team, to the full funding of a full position, because again, I think it's important to take change gradually and to do things in incremental stages, to see what kind of positive effect we can do from a smaller change. So again, as an administrative team, we felt we could go to a .6. And again, you can see, we could fund some of this through reducing that .7 position, and also because there's also change in personnel, which affects salary levels, and so this is really a change with no effect to the overall budget. It's cost neutral. But again, it provides a different level of support for the preschool program. So again, I think that strengthens the program overall, and certainly does continue to meet the needs of students. Then going on to the high school and the K-12 continuum, this is probably more interesting in how we had to deal with this. We knew going into this year, because we could see the student population in eighth grade, that we needed to do something for the high school level. And ... And so the staffing that has been in place for this is at the high school, there really wasn't a teacher who could meet the needs of these students. These are students who are sometimes several years below grade level. And rather than lose them to out-of-district placements, we thought, could we do something in district? There's always been this position in place at Russell Street. This year, we've had two teachers who've served this population at the middle school. And we really had a position that's been considered a .5 position at Shaker Lane. So in looking at this and how, again, we could fund this, we were able to staff the tier four position at the high school by shifting one of those positions from the middle school up to the high school, which makes sense because the students move, so the teacher can move. And then to increase the position at Shaker Lane from a .1 to a full-time position, again, we were able to use that money that we could, that resource of that .7 special education teacher and shift that over to the K-12, K-2 position. And so what I think is interesting is that we've been able to post the, some of these positions internally. And then we go outside and we advertise using SchoolSpring, which is an online site. And so we've posted them. They, applications close June 10th. And I think as a measure of interest, already we have 50 applicants for the special education positions. So we'll certainly have a good pool to pick from. And then going to the school psychologist, again, I think this is a need that the school committee has supported. And I want to appreciate the, your support for that. I think it is a genuine need for the students at that level. We've had only two school psychologists to serve the entire district. A lot of their work involves assessment, but there certainly is, I think, a growing appreciation for the need for emotional support for students. And so we are able to hire a new school psychologist who will be dedic, well, again, we can, we're calling them a school psychologist because that's what we've advertised for. But they will be dedicated to the high school. And we have 24 applicants for that position. So again, we'll certainly have a good pool to pick from and we'll have a, again, a process for going through that review and interviewing. But again, I think as Superintendent Clancy said, this involved, I think, input certainly from the principals, because these are their schools that they each advocate for. And it involved compromise and I think also some creative use of where our resources are and willing to give up some in certain places and put them in other places. Any questions?
No questions?
What are tier four services? I'm, I'm familiar with them.
What do you mean by tier four services?
Yes.
Okay, when we write IEPs, we write them as to whether the service is going to be delivered in a classroom or out of a classroom?
In classroom being tier one?
Uh, no, no, no. Tier one is all just general ed. Those are kids that, right. So you don't really think about special ed truly until you get like to tier three, because these are students whose curriculums might not match up with what the general curriculum is. Again, a child who might be succeeding in one area but not in another area, they have to have remedial, well, not remedial, but really a modified program. So you're in fifth grade, you're not doing fifth grade math, your skills for whatever reason are more at a third grade level. So the special educator through the IEP has that curriculum and usually will either service a child in a classroom or out of the classroom. So typically, someone who's, a tier three can really be quite balanced as to whether they're in a classroom or out of the classroom. Usually when we're talking about tier four, again, these are the children who are really probably needing more remedial, not remedial, I don't want to use remedial, because again, that's going to confuse people, a more modified curriculum. So typically, they're pulled out more. Again, the, the difference between where they're at and where the rest of the general population is at has really widened. And so most of their program is going to be out of the classroom.
So it usually means more individual support at a tier four level because it's usually probably a one-on-one sort of setting?
Uh, possibly.
Or some other?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for that. Another question is just at the, at the high school with the third school psychologist. Will it be working solely with special stu, you know, special education students as the other two psychologists do? Or will it be a general blend or?
Well, even now, the other school psychologists can work with anyone. So truly, they're a real resource. I mean, again, we have guidance counselors in the schools, but certainly by the high school level, the guidance counselors are doing a lot more than, than just helping kids. They do a lot with, you know, college entrance and everything else. But, so certainly the school psychologists at the high school will be able to be there as a resource for all students, not just special education students.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Excellent question. When we see Rita standing at the podium, we think of special education. But Rita's, her role is broader than that, so it's a good question.
The reticence on the word psychologist?
Skill sets. I'm, I'm looking for skill sets rather than title. Depending on, on how the psychologist was trained would determine whether or not they would be fit to offer the services that we're looking for. Services could be offered by a social worker, a mental health worker, depending on, on the training that they've had and the experience.
So degrees of requirement then?
Well, it is. It is, there are degrees in different areas. You'll find though, that there's a lot of crossover. People start out as social workers, for example, and then they end up being psychologists. You don't see the other flow very often. It's usually social work that are psychologists. But, uh, mental health workers, there's, there's a lot of cross-training.
Trained certified psychologists in the skill set within that category is what you're looking for?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Just, it's my understanding as sort of a different role that they will be filling using those same training, that same backgrounds.
Yeah. We're, we're looking, we're looking for somebody that can, can truly address the needs that we have in our schools, rather than somebody that would be referring. We want somebody with that skill set. That's what we're looking for.
I appreciate this, this type of presentation. This helps a lot, seeing this quantified and, and getting a description of the process that you went through to, while we are adding capacity here, it was done in a very judicious manner. That helps us a lot to think about and be able to talk in the community about how we're going about it. I would love to see this type of thing as we go forward in other aspects too, if, if it's manageable. I know we can get lost in the pour sometimes, so we just have to be careful. But this kind of quantifying of how we're allocating resources and being able to explain why you're doing what you're doing and the impact that it has and the opportunity that it affords can, can be very meaningful to us and then to the community as a whole. So, you know, if you, if you think you can do this more often, then I think it would be worthwhile to us to see it quantify like this. I appreciate that. All right. This certainly doesn't require any type of vote or anything. This is just current administration, day-to-day administration, so that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have some tentative dates. It may just need to be a date, but for a summer workshop. So I proposed August 20th, August 21st. I'm not sure whether we'll need both days or not. That's going to be up to the chairman.
I think our practice is to always book the two and then we'll see what the agenda looks like and how deep we go. What days of the week are those?
Wednesday, Thursday.
Wednesday, Thursday.
That, it works for me. I'm back. My kids are busy, already busy by then, so Daryl is it?
Yeah, it's far enough ahead that I can block my, my calendar.
Too bad for Chuck.
You're not going to hold that one for him to come back.
I can take a hold one back for him. Can't just stop all business because Chuck's not here. All right. Anything else on the superintendent's report?
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Subcommittee reports, PMBC.
Attended PMBC meeting the other evening. A few things came up. The work at 300 King Street to redo the park area and the playground that's in that area, the basketball courts. They're getting ready to go out for a request proposal. They expect to get it on the central register on about 18 June. Going to have a three-week response period so that it gets back in a ward on about one August. They're projecting a 11-week pop, excuse me, period of performance. And with eight-week actual project schedule and three weeks of slack is built into that. And that's going out at 377K. And then we'll see what actually happens to come in for the actual bid. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Awesome. The abrevities that have been on the brim, brim, excuse me, of the track, may notice that they're a delightful color brown. They have the nursery coming out to check those out as to what happened there. So I'm sure some folks have noticed that.
They die. Get those guns back. Don't shoot them at us.
The way, the way I put it, PMBC was, they are D-E-E-E-A-D. So yes.
Did you hear? In terms of process with that money and how it's deployed, does our department become directly involved or are they handling the projects?
King Street?
No, I.
The track.
Oh, I'm going to talk about money and.
Okay. I was jumping ahead maybe.
Yeah. Now, if you're asking about the abrevities.
No, no, I was, I was jumping ahead on you there.
You're talking about capital items?
Yes.
Item number three, capital items, from the available funds that town meeting voted and appropriated, allowed us to appropriate. You know, there was various smaller things, iPad and COTS 33,000, school technology, computers 65,000, another technology program, 25,000, school security upgrades, 50,000. The Shaker Lane you talked about earlier, you alluded to, Shaker Lane, you said duct tape, 25,000 there, plus the Wi-Fi, another 25,000, the roof at the high school of the administrative area, 100,000. The high school building site itself, 27,000 and some change. And then some smaller ticket items. Shaker Lane though, you know, they quartered a million dollars, 24,000 dollars to infrastructure on around the building and stuff. All of those, and Steve's been working with them, but Hurch Crowley, Joe Clentrow and Steve, they're going to get together, do the coordination and the scheduling of each of these. Steve will be issuing the POs, so the school department has the stick on the actual disposition of the money, dispersing of it. I think that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
So that's where we are with that. One thing that did come up when we started talking about the surveillance infrastructure and the cameras that we have on Russell, if perhaps so, we could look at some way of also looking at the track, because certainly it's a valuable asset of the town. And we may, while we're somewhat serendipitous, but we were able to help identify the vandals who vandalized the school buses a little while back. The camera, it was good enough fidelity that it actually read the license plate. So the thought is, and this is something I would suggest we just pass down to the security and safety subcommittee for more discussion, because there would be some infrastructure requirements, certainly another camera, you know, pointing that way. And then can the server handle it, things of that nature.
We have a meeting on Tuesday.
So it's definitely with you?
Yep.
So that's right. So just leave that one.
Yep.
And I think that was about it. Any questions to me on those items?
Questions? All right. All set. Budget Subcommittee, we have not met. So nothin' to report there. And lastly, Policy Subcommittee.
Before we jump into the policy, I have a question and it gets back to, gosh. Five gentlemen, when you were briefing, when you were briefing Twitter.
Yeah.
Where the teachers may tweet, use Aspen, do email. And this is a question, it's not that I want to drive in this direction. I think it's a question asked, a question answered, and not necessarily answered this evening. But do we need a policy on using technology to communicate? So that a teacher, very adept at technology, tweets, emails, Aspen, maybe another technique as it comes down the road, whether it's Facebook or not, or anything else. And I know we have social media and we've talked about some of that, but it's more use of social media. But should we have an instructional use of social media policy, so to speak? I'm sort of thinking aloud at this point, it just says, when you said, well, now a teacher may be tweeting also. If everybody's not following that teacher, do we run the risk of an important tweet not being duplicated in one of those other systems?
Yeah, so.
So actually, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Let me, so from the policy perspective, I've had several conversations with Kelly over the last couple of years about the use of technology, social media and the other parts of it there. We've been separating out the instructional use of technology and then leaving that purely within the administration's piece there, as well as their cognizance that not all parents or students may have access to those particular communications means. And I think they're, they're very sensitive on how they're addressing that from an administration perspective. From the social media and the other policy aspects of it, again, it's, it's a rapidly evolving piece there. We don't want to, we discussed and we haven't brought it fully forward here, is, is, we felt we didn't want to try to regulate the evolution, the use of the evolution of the technology. We want to let it adapt and use it as appropriate there. The discussion I had with the superintendent was relative to social media and the other parts there is more of a memo letter from the administration leadership reminding the teachers about their responsibilities in using, use of social media, their interactions with social media and students, given that they're minors and that they're in positions of authority. And dealing with it, letting it, from the policy perspective, us endorsing the use of the technology, which I think our current policy will, does or will be modified to, to do that. And then using sort of more of administrative oversight to provide the day-to-day direction on that. Because if we visit social media once a year, we still can't keep up with, with what needs to happen in, in the monitoring of what needs to go on in social media. I think we made a conscious decision that we were not going to be policemen of social media. There's been discussions in other districts about having the administration track, track student tweets to see if they're appropriate or not. And I think we decided to stay away from being the policeman of social media there. But, you know, and, and some of that's, we haven't brought that updated technology policy forward yet, but I think that's where we're at in the, in the discussion side of it. And I think that would now allow you to clarify from the, from the administration's perspective of how that's working.
I do think he asked a great question, because he asked an educational side question about, you know, are we, you don't want to miss anybody. And so when we talk about these tools and you can name whichever one you want, we talk about the instructional tools of toolbox. So that's what I tried to say earlier, that, you know, teacher A is using six different methodologies to get information out. It's quite frequently the same information going out in different ways so that the parents and kids can differentiate how they access that information and instruction. And we have to be very careful when you use technology like a flipped classroom or an Edmodo, that if you give an assignment and you have a good handle, which I believe we do, where we are, on who can access and who can't, that we set kids up to go up to the library at different times or to use a school iPad so they can still have a level playing field. So I think it's twofold. You have to, you have to provide multiple tools for the toolbox to teach it to get this information out, either structurally or informationally. And secondarily, you can't have a kid or a family not have access. So that's, those are two powerful.
Yeah, but surely, and the discussion you just related, it's certainly, it sounds like a very good discussion and fruitful at that point. And I'm, I'm surely not against it being a procedure versus a policy. But certainly something that's very clear-cut, it would have to be, I know you understand that. But I think at some point, maybe very early in the next school year, at a school committee meeting, maybe present what that process, procedure is, so the public does understand that. Because I, I can see some anxiety out there where, I don't know how to tweet, you know, type thing.
How to get a tweet.
Yeah, you know, is that, you know, we get to roll with that for a while. But the point thing is now, a parent or even, is every single, you know, 1,600 of our kids tweeting? I don't know the answer to that. Maybe close to all. Who the heck knows?
A lot are. I, I found out that after I closed the school for a snow day. They logged on to my tweet.
You've got a lot of followers out there.
Yeah, that was a, a real jump in frequency. But those are, those are excellent questions though. And, and, you know, we've, we've been having a number of conversations. And there, there are two areas that, that we really need to start sorting out rather quickly. And that is, how do, how do people know how to log on? Even, even as a superintendent, when I'm, I'm following teachers and looking at their blogs, et cetera, where it's, it's just too disorganized at this point in time. We need, we need to find a better way of, of putting their blog addresses up so that people can access them, their tweet addresses, et cetera. And I think a second component, PJ, and that's something that we've, we've talked about and we need to roll out, is having some information sessions for parents in terms of, of helping them get up to speed. And also talking about security and how do you monitor what your, your children are doing when, when they're blogging and tweeting and on and on and on? Because it's, it's a whole new spectrum that, you know, we, we need to provide some assistance in.
You guys have given it the thoughts, you know, and you're addressing it. We perhaps could communicate it a bit more. It'd be helpful.
True.
Thanks.
Give it a sugar fix on these policies.
It's the treat, the reward for staying all the way through the meeting.
So tonight, we have.
So tonight, we have a few policies here, they fall into two categories. One, there's been some sort of effective June 30th type updates to some of the various laws that we need to have in place so that the, they're in effect for the open of school next year. One of them being the expulsion requirements there. So we, we need to have these updated. So some of them, the MAS C finally published some of their, their recommended language for some of these items. So let me just hit on these real quickly here. Policy ADDA, which is the background checks. So last year, we just did an extensive update of that to include all the new query requirements there. And then this year, the law update was updated to include the fingerprinting requirement for all professional staff there. MAS C just a few weeks ago published their recommended verbiage for it. So basically, we're going to update to their recommended language on it there. JHD is the, basically updates to all of the chapter 222 requirements concerning expulsions there. JIC student conduct contains a secondary update just to make it consistent with the, the expulsion requirements there. There was a reference in there regarding the procedures and pieces there, particularly about the removing the, the ability for the school committee to deny access to educations from students expelled from other communities there. And then JICHB bullying prevention was updated with the most recent language from Mass General Law that identifies that certain categories, certain activities may, student activities may be more subject to bullying than others and it just is a reminder for sense, allows for a little bit more attention to the, the different categories of students there. We did not incorporate the language that included additional disciplinary actions based on a specific subcategory of things. There are, my position, and I think it was supported by the superintendent, is bullying is not acceptable, period, independent of any of the other categories of student identification that may go along with that there. So given that we didn't have this, another meeting scheduled in June, I'm, I was going to ask that these, we waive the second reading on these, these policies here so that we can have them in effect for the administration to make sure that they act upon over the summer there. The other four ones to rescind are basically the
Why don't we go ahead and knock that, knock out the first motion?
Knock that out. So I have the proposed motion in the, in the packet there, which is the motion to waive the second reading and approve the following policies, ADDA, JHD, JIC and JICHB.
Second?
Motion to the main segment. Any discussion?
Yeah, just in addition to bullying, you know, is wrong no matter who is, you know, done to, I think not incorporating that particular language also preserves the ability of our administrators to make that call if they feel that, you know, a certain act is more serious based in one of those categories. It gives them the leeway and the flexibility to make a determination in the moment with all relevant information present, without dictating from us, saying this is exactly how you deal with it. So I think it's a good, a good take.
Anything else? All right, here, no further discussion. I will take a vote on the motion.
Aye.
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 All right, all right. Very good, thank you. Moving on, Darrell.
Okay, and then the, the remaining six policies recommending to rescind. These ones here, GCCC and GCC dash R, provide no guidance beyond following the law. And I, the position that we've been taking is we follow the law, so we don't need a policy that says we do unless the law says we have to have a policy that says to follow the law.
Getting to Joseph Heller territory.
Well, no, unfortunately, we have run into a couple of policies that I've had to put back in because the comprehensive review said we had to have a policy that said we followed the law. I found no, no such requirement for those two. And policy GDBD, support staff infringe benefits. Previously, we modified policy GDB's benefits to encompass all staff, so we didn't need a separate policy for the support staff. And then we get to the corresponding GDCC and GDCC dash R, which were the support staff versions of those of GCCC. And again, they provide no, no guidance to the administration there beyond following the law. And then policy GDE, support staff posting of vacancies. We mod, previously modified policy GCE to encompass our practice of posting all vacancies, be it professional or support staff. So that policy is no longer necessary there. So my proposed motion is to, motion to waive the second reading and rescind the following policies, GCCC, GCCC dash R, GDBD, GDCC, GDCC dash R and GDE.
Second?
Motion to the main seconded. Any discussion? If there are none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, very good. Thank you, Darrell, as always. Anything else in policy?
No, that's, I have, I didn't bring my spreadsheet that had the counts of how many we've gone through here. I'll have those from maybe from a retreat there.
All right. Any other business before we get to interested citizens? No. All right, interested citizens. Got one.
Lisa Boone, I'm here just to, as CPAC, co-chair CPAC, I just wanted to announce that our final CPAC meeting was scheduled for next Tuesday on the 10th and we are rescheduling it due to the Littleton Middle School Arts and Music Night. And so we're very excited about that actually. So, but at this time, I believe our rescheduled date is going to be Monday, June 16th. It is our final meeting and so I just wanted to make sure that that information gets out there and as soon as it's official, it's certainly the meeting will be posted for, and we will be trying to take some final votes on some distribution of funds and, and planning for the beginning of next school year. So it, it's, it's an important meeting. We'd love to have people join us. And then, now, not as a CPAC person, as a citizen, just an interested citizen, I wanted to say first that I'm really excited about all of the things that we've seen tonight from each individual school, all of the improvements and the progress that they've made in instructional practices and, and the way that they're utilizing technology for instructional use has just been fantastic and I think it's been really informative tonight. And, and I just wanted to say that, you know, it's true, it's sort of exploded, this use of media and, and reaching out and making the classroom be more available to parents and community. The one thing, the one area that I'd love to see improved on, and I know this is all, you know, currently just in the, in beginning, is helping the community and parents be more aware of what's available out there. It just, it's so hard to keep up with it. And I think that there's so many good things happening that, and, and I think I'm pretty good about trying to keep up with it, but even I am, you know, surprised in a sense by what's been going on and I, you know, it's hard to know about it and it's such an important piece to, because, but I know it's hard. And so that would be one area that, and I'm happy to hear that it's continually being thought about is how to get that information out. Certainly the website, being able to utilize that more if that's the go-to place for people to see what might be available or however you want to handle it. But for next school year, that would be really helpful as well as possibly, and I don't know how this would happen, some little tutoring for parents, you know, or, or community members, whoever, about how to get access and utilize this because it's, it's really great. I mean, I think Littleton's really improving a lot and there's some really great things happening. So, you know, continuing to get that information out there and how we can continue to hear about it is something that I would love to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other interested citizens? None. All right. I believe, Steve?
Can I just remind everyone that bus registration's open? Information's online. Talk to your neighbors, spread the word. Thank you.
All right. Get done sooner rather than later helps the administration quite a bit. I believe that our veteran told us this is today, the actual 70th anniversary? Tomorrow is the 70th anniversary of D-Day. On that immediate coverage, I'll make sure we don't take that for granted. We have a tremendous public education system in part because we are a free democracy. So we need to keep that in mind. 6:30 tomorrow, graduation?
Yes.
6:30 tomorrow, graduation, the big day. Pretty sure my, my only suit is still clean from last year. I think I'm ready to go. I'm a little late now, we'll figure it out. I do believe we need an executive session
Yes.
For contract negotiations, so. Anybody can handle that? Can you handle that? All right, I want to take a motion.
I was talking to you. You've already announced it, so, okay, I move that we adjourn the meeting to go to executive session for purposes of contract negotiations with no intention of resuming open meeting.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded. This requires a roll call vote. Darrell?
Aye.
DJ?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
I say aye. All right, thank you, everybody. Warrants, please. Is that everything you hoped it would be? All right. I'm sure you've talked to Kelly about the school first, so if you need to leave early, I can come in from late. If you can't be here, that's fine. Just